Good evening, West Orange, and welcome. It's a new year, 2017. Happy New Year to all at home and in the audience today. And we happen to have, I want to acknowledge some dignitaries in the audience. Assemblyman McKeon is here. Assemblyman McKeon, Assemblywoman Myla Jacey. We have Judge Harry Starrett here. And of course, our own Mayor Parisi. Welcome, and thank you for being here on a special day. Are we going to get started? Madam Clerk, roll call.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger, posted on the municipal bulletin board, and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 28, 2016. The annual notice was also published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 8, 2016. Councilwoman Castellino.
Present.
Councilman Guarino.
Present.
Councilman Kukowiak.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Council President Cirillo.
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are going to get started now. We have the Oaths of Office. The first oath. Madam Clerk, would you be guiding us through this process?
I can absolutely announce everything.
Please do.
There is one small matter. Tonight, we were supposed to continue with the December 20, 2016, meeting, but that has been postponed until January 17, 2017. Okay? All right. So for Oaths of Office, Michelle Castellino, it will be administered by Assemblyman John McKeon.
Most of my wonderful family, my husband, Tony, and my son, Joseph. Come on up. Come on down. My other two children work in the city, couldn't get here.
Feel your pain. If you can, again, it is my honor and privilege, Padron, if you could hold the Bible along with your son and Michelle, you'll put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Again, thank you for giving me the honor of espousing you. And congratulations to our future Council President, to the reelection of Councilman Guarino, and to our entire council and governing body. We're all counting on you as West Orange residents, so best of all of you. Michelle, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Please repeat after me. "I, Michelle Castellino."
I, Michelle Castellino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
"I do further solemnly swear."
"I do further solemnly swear."
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of Councilwoman.
Of the office of Councilwoman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilwoman.
The next oath is Jerry Guarino, and this will be administered by Mayor Robert Parisi.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're left stranded ourselves up here. Madam Clerk, I'm on my own to defend for this stuff. Thank you. I do want to, it's the first meeting that we've had that I've been at, I do want to congratulate Councilwoman Castellino on her reelection, Councilman Guarino on his reelection. It's an honor to provide this service for you. You honor me by asking me. And of course, congratulate Councilman Kukowiak and wish you the best as Council President. The administration is looking forward to working together, so wish you the best of luck. Are you ready?
Yep.
"I."
I, Jerry Guarino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
"I do further solemnly swear."
"I do further solemnly swear."
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of the office of Councilman.
Of the office of Councilman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Our next oath is for Councilman Kukowiak, and it will be administered by former Chief Judge of the West Orange Municipal Court, the Honorable Harry Starrett.
There's actually two. First is Councilman, and then Council President.
Correct. What's that? Okay.
Well, first, I'm honored to follow not only our Assemblymen, but our Mayor, so it's interesting. I never thought I'd be the third speaker.
Yes.
Okay.
What's that?
I'll repeat after me. "I, Joseph Kukowiak."
"I, Joseph Kukowiak."
Not exactly.
I tried.
"Do solemnly swear."
"Do solemnly swear."
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
"I do further solemnly swear."
"I do further solemnly swear."
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of the office of Councilman.
All of the duties of the office of Councilman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, number one. I'll do number two. All right, here we go. Do better this time. "I, Joe Kukowiak."
"I, Joe Kukowiak."
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
"I do further solemnly swear."
"I do further solemnly swear."
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of the office of Council President.
Of the office of Council President.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Council President, just come by here. Yeah, I'm still packing, so I'm not done. Just give me a second. But before I get done, we want to present you with the special gavel. And I do want to thank the community for, and my colleagues, for the privilege and honor of serving you in this capacity. Just, I'm really proud to, like, you know, be a resident of this town. It's a great community. Every time we invite friends to our community, I mean, they marvel at how beautiful the town is, and, you know, when we sit here, we try to make the best decisions possible, you know, to keep that quality of life and to keep the town going in a direction that we used to. So I think we had a good year. And we've done a good job in maintaining that. Our property values are going up. For some of us, it's the biggest investment in our lives, our homes. And when we sit here, that's really been my objective, you know, to make sure that we look out after our neighbors or properties and quality of life. We have some really good people that work for us, you know, under the Mayor, at the administration, all the departments, in different capacities. Every time you ask for something, people just come by. You know, I've had meetings where we had code enforcement people there on a Friday at nine o'clock at night talking to constituents. So it's just a testament to the special community that we live in. But I'm really proud of the biggest achievement this year, and I think that's been the redevelopment, the beginning of construction in the redevelopment area. There's a lot of good things ahead, and now with the Orange Valley and the Central Avenue redevelopment project, we're beginning to feel that excitement again about something new that can be transformed. There's some articles in the paper that have been written about it, so, you know, as I sit there, I'll do what I can to make sure that that's moved forward, and eventually it leads to a product that we can all be proud of. In this article, they highlighted, you know, the different restaurants in the area, the neighborhood, the Valley Arts District. There's a lot of potential. There's the train station, the Highland Avenue train station. Assemblyman McKeon is working so hard to get New Jersey Transit to invest in there, and that neighborhood should be a destination. We're going to work hard to make sure that that comes through. And talking about Main Street, I see Megan Brill back there and the work that the downtown West Orange Alliance is doing. Great year, great year. And I'm happy to have supported all your efforts. You have a good board, a lot of good people that are working hard, and they're very committed to the downtown. Through social media, we're starting to see a lot of movement, a lot of traffic starting to come to our Main Street, and we're moving in a good direction. You know, stuff that was started by our former Mayor McKeon in the early 2000s, you know, it's bearing fruit, and I'm privileged to be part of that. And Council President, I want to wish you the best of luck. I know that you'll do a good job, and we're all excited to see what kind of work you do on behalf of the constituents, oh, this is the new, on behalf of our constituents, and just guide us along as we do the people's work, okay?
Thank you.
So our faith is in you, and you'll do a good job. God bless.
Thank you, Victor.
Okay. So it reads, "Presented to Council President Joe Kukowiak by former Council President Victor Cirillo." Congratulations.
Thank you. And now that I'm officially Council President, I get to tell the former Council President to come over to the podium, because we have a little party gift for him.
Maybe move my stuff still, Councilman.
Council President.
Now, I'm not nearly as good a speaker. This is someone who could speak for five minutes, it's temporaneously, so I wrote it down just to make sure that I got it right. The Council President's job is not a job that's easy to do well. You run the meetings, and you guide development of the meeting agendas, in addition to your regular council duties. So you, more than anyone else on the council, are making decisions in real time that frequently not everyone is happy with. Council President Cirillo did an excellent job in 2016 in trying to balance the desire of everyone for efficient meetings with the desire to give everyone an appropriate voice in the decision-making of our town. And on behalf of the Town Council, and the administration, and the residents of West Orange, we want to say thank you very much for your term as Council President. You have certainly earned this plaque of recognition and appreciation, as well as your right to watch someone else sit in the hot seat for a while. The plaque says, "In appreciation for your dedicated service and commitment to the township of West Orange and your leadership role as Council President." Thank you very much, Council President. Softly lonely up here. Sounds good. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're next going to do Council Liaison announcements. Perhaps before we do, maybe we could ask Mr. Sayers to give us any update on downtown redevelopment, if there's anything to talk about over the Christmas holiday. I heard somebody say that they saw Santa Claus up on the third floor, but I don't know that that's part of your report.
I didn't see any, or Council President, but he was probably there. I was down there today, actually, and they've initiated permits for the ROR. They, time racing, they met with our [inaudible] and seems to have worked out. They issued a temporary commitment to the construction of the ROR, as you can see, the metal braces are already up. So they're moving ahead with that, and they're waiting for the final facade change plan, which we haven't gotten yet, and hopefully they'll have that by the end of this week. Metal studs in the battery building, if you drive by there, you can see them, they're being put in, so everything's getting, moving along pretty well. And they're finishing up the inside of the garage and completing the house suits on top.
Sounds good. Any questions, comments?
Any, Council President? Mr. Sayers, any marketing materials being developed yet, or been proposed yet by the developer? Marketing materials to start marketing the units and the...
Not as far as I know. I mean, they may be, but I haven't really approached that question.
Any delays, any, anything coming out? Everything going well with the Historic Preservation Commission and...
Yes. Hey, they met, and everybody's, we're all on the same page.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Anyone, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to Councilman's point about the marketing. When I had spoken with them, when I went down for a visit, they said they wouldn't put marketing out to probably six months before completion of the project, is kind of their timeframe. But the renderings, are they still working on that to get up on the website of the...
There are some renderings that we have, but not new ones.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if they're putting together new ones or not, but I can discuss that with them.
Okay, yeah, because I know they're waiting for the final.
Final plan.
The plan with the committee.
That's hopefully going to be done by the end of this week.
Okay. Hopefully, the weather will hold out this winter, so.
Anyone else? Who'd like to start Council Liaison announcements?
Jo, I thought your next question was going to be on St. Mark's. We did get an email this morning from Marty Falowitz, that Channel 11 News, right? It's during, one year after, on St. Mark's. We can Google that, because it started at six.
Just to follow up on that.
Yes.
Marty is the Vice Chairman of the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission Meeting, and ran down to the site today to do a live interview, so we're hoping we get some good press out of that. Do you want to continue on?
Sure. Also today, I spoke to Ken Mandell. He's the Chairperson of the Classic Film Festival. That starts next Sunday, January 15, at two o'clock, and every Sunday thereafter. If you become a member of the West Orange Arts Council, you receive a discount on the tickets. They're at the, the film festival is every Sunday afternoon at two o'clock at the AMC Theater. The first one, like I said, is January 15, and that's Alfred Hitchcock's "The Lady Vanishes." The lineup is The Network, Manchurian Candidate, Hold That Ghost, The Black Maria Film Festival, Gilda, High Noon, and Ran. Please go to westorange, W-O-A-R-S dot org for more information and membership. Councilman, you had asked me about the Planning Board resolution. I had not had that printed out on the redevelopment. Victor just mentioned about Central Avenue redevelopment. I know we're going to vote on it. I could talk about it now, or wait until, was the resolution about the conditions part of that?
Why don't we wait till we...
Okay, we can do that.
Yes.
We do have a Planning Board meeting tomorrow evening here in Council Chambers at 7:30, and there are two applications, a subdivision at 25 Highwood Road, and the cliffs at Eagle Rock, the Baptist Home Society on Eagle Rock Avenue. They are submitting an application to create a small rehabilitation physical therapy center. They have one now, but it's not really private for the residents, and we will look at that application tomorrow. And we also, this isn't, just a congratulations to Troop 12. They are, there will be an Eagle Court Honor on Thursday, Eagle Scout, for Matthew Sarret, Boy Scout, Troop 12. Matthew is Troop 178th Eagle Scout. So congratulations to all the scout masters involved.
Thank you. Anyone else?
One more, sorry. Save the date for the West Orange Chamber of Commerce Annual Breakfast, the Forum for the Mayor's State of the Town address. It will be Wednesday, February 8, at eight o'clock a.m. at the Welser Grand Hotel. Tickets are $35. You can go to westorangechamber.com to purchase tickets. Thank you.
Councilman Guarino.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to give everybody an update, just about the other things of what the Downtown Alliance does, other than street fairs and getting people to come work and do business on Main Street. I have to say to thank the West Orange community and the business community for the great assistance they gave to a fellow merchant when they came together and helped the owner of purchased possessions to find a new location when the building he's currently in had smoke damage, especially during the high Christmas season. And I have to do just a big shout-out to not only the board of the Downtown Alliance, but to the merchants and shoppers in the downtown quarter who came together to help a fellow merchant keep his business going, particularly during the Christmas season. So I just want to thank them, and thank the Downtown West Orange Alliance Board. Another call-out, I know, nobody ever wonders, you know, I sit on the board of the Joint Commission, and I think people don't, and residents don't realize what the Joint Commission is. Well, the Joint Commission is made up of the neighboring communities who have their waste treatment funneled through the Joint Commission. And just to say that the great things that they're doing, particularly this current year, and it's been a pleasure to serve on this board, is the upgrades to the facility, which is based in Elizabeth, New Jersey, and the upgrades for storm prevention, additional EPA requirements. If you were just to take and look at what this organization does to make sure that your waste treatment is put, you know, put out into the wastewater at a very, very acceptable, safe level to protect our environment. So nobody's ever talked about it, but I think our residents would be interested in what the Joint Commission does, and that's what's been going on. And I had the pleasure of following after Councilman Victor Cirillo, who served faithfully on that board. So thank you very much, Council President.
Who's next?
I'll go.
Former Council President Cirillo.
Council President, a couple of things. The Dugan House will be meeting on the 12, so that's coming up. Couple of weeks, our next meeting. Some wonderful work that's being done there through Debbie Salin, already changing the windows to make sure that there's water infiltration issues, so that's mitigated. She's doing a good job with that, some elevator rehab work. And also, they just had a really nice holiday party to make sure that, you know, our elderly are being cared for, and, you know, we're providing recreational opportunities as best as we can. In addition to that, we talked about boards that we serve on. I'm looking forward to my service, my continued service on the insurance board. We make some really important decisions on behalf of our municipality. I make sure that our premiums are safeguarded, and we have a pretty good team, and I'm looking to, continuing to serve in that capacity. Lastly, I do want to thank the Senior Citizen Services Department. Patty Duffy and her team had a wonderful holiday party. Our seniors are having a great time. It was so nice to see everybody. It seems like everyone was there that day at the West Orange Manor. We had a good time greeting everyone, catching up with some of our friends around town, and also the Mayor's Program with, for individuals with disabilities, they had a really good holiday party as well. West Orange Foundation, overall, really good time celebrating the holidays with our constituents and in our community, Council President. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Yes. So the Public Relations Commission will be meeting next Thursday night to start our first meeting of the year. This February, we're starting to work on our Relator Open House. We're going to have another residential open house. I'm just trying to get a, Mayor's working out a date for us and with the superintendent's school. So once we get that finalized, I'll let you know the date of when we're going to be able to host that event again. Worked out well last year. We had about 95, Ms. Anderson, we had about 95 relators come. So we're looking forward to increasing the enrollment for that event, which was very productive. And over the holidays, we also had, thank you for the residents who came out for the menorah lighting last week in between the break, as well of all the other holiday parties. And it's just such dedication from so many of our residents to give back and do for all, which is, you know, very rewarding here. And this Saturday, I will be attending the League of Municipalities Seminar for newly elective officials. I'm not sure if anybody else wants to join me, but I'll be in East Rutherford on Saturday, and they'll be going over all legislative issues for the past year, so I'm looking forward to that seminar. And I just want to congratulate the West Orange PAL. They had tryouts and really working hard on building up their program. When they had a shift in gears, went over from in-house to a traveling program, we didn't know how that was going to work out, and already since last year, they've doubled their enrollment on their teams, travel teams. So kudos to the League and for all their efforts. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Just very briefly, as Councilwoman McCartney mentioned about the Historic Preservation Commission, we're really pleased to see the progress at St. Mark's Church. There's a meeting next Wednesday, 7:00 p.m., Town Hall of the Historic Preservation Commission, and everybody is invited. We'll be talking about grants and also the St. Mark's Church. Just also wanted to say that the West Orange Open Space and Recreation Committee met last week, no, not last week, no, not last week.
It was December 21st, December 24th.
Was it? Well, two weeks ago. To vote to in support of a grant application for matching grant for Green Acres Funding to help with the development of the rock site up at the top of Mount Pleasant Avenue. There's been a plan developed with a variety of gardens, meadows, and structures, and we're looking for money to build that out. So that should be moving ahead, and hopefully we'll hear something good from the grant application in the near future. And that's all I have. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger, posted on the municipal bulletin board, and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 28, 2016. and sixteen. The annual notice was also published in the West Orange Chronicle on December eighth, two thousand and sixteen. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cerriello?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Krokodya?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Uh, I'd like to open the floor now for public comment. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. I'd like to try something slightly different tonight, hopefully to speed up the meeting. And I'd like to identify the first three speakers, if I could, and ask the first speaker to come to the podium, and ask the next two speakers to come down and sit in the front row. And I think that might speed, uh, speed up the process, at least it'll, it'll be an experiment. Please start with your name and address, and please be mindful of the five-minute limit. And once all, all public comment speakers are done, council members and administration members will respond if they so choose. Would anyone like to speak? Yes, Mr. Cubey. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Morelli, could you possibly just come on down to the front row? Anyone else? Yes, there we go.
Come on down. Happy New Year, Dave.
Happy New Year, council members.
Happy New Year.
First of all, I just want to give a little update on.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dave Cubey, Director of the West Orange Public Library. My apologies.
That's okay.
First of all, I want to say thanks again to the township. I think the facade is looking fantastic going up. If you're a resident out there and you haven't seen it, go check it out. It's looking good. And appreciate the municipality stepping forward. We had some HVAC units go down, but those are getting repaired, so appreciate that. And just an update on some things going up. Right now in our art gallery, there's a local artist, really great artwork by a resident named Misuk Cho, and she was the creative director at L'Oréal for twenty years, so it's really great. Before this month is up, I would recommend you go check it out at the library's gallery, which is also in our meeting room. Some upcoming programs that we have coming up. Another installation of Biz Two Point O, Workshops for Growing Businesses, this Thursday, January fifth, at seven PM. Most Common and Avoidable Legal Mistakes Small Business Owners Make. Business attorney Barry Gartenberg will discuss ways to avoid potentially serious legal mistakes small business owners commonly make when starting and running their businesses. So bring your questions about choosing a business entity, LLC versus corporation, partnership agreements, employee issues, and more. As part of our continuing arts series program, Saturday, January twenty-first, Paper Cutting, The Art of Paper Cutting, at West Orange Library by a local artist, Ann Volum, for a fun, hands-on experience. You can register for that. No experience needed, just patience. Materials are provided, but if you do have your own X-acto knife or cutting mat, please bring them. We've got a great program for health coming up, that we were wanting to turn this into a regular program, but this Sat-, but Saturday, January seventh, there will be a program, Mommy and Me, and it's a free workout class for moms, along with their babies and/or toddlers. So start the new year with a stronger, healthier you, and that's from nine fifteen AM to ten fifteen AM, Saturday, January seventh. And if you're able to register, that would be much appreciated. The teen programs we've got coming up, we've got starting soon, we've got Girls Who Code Club, and this is actually filled up already, but you can sign up and be put on the waiting list. And this is for Aimed at Inspiring and Helping Girls Acquire the Skills Necessary for Twenty-First Century Careers, and that's weekly on Thursday afternoons from January nineteenth to April twenty-seventh, from four to six PM, grade six to twelve. The Teen Writers Club will be meeting the second Wednesday of the month, January eleventh, February eighth, and March eighth. Teen Game Night, the third Wednesday of the month, December twenty-first, January eighteenth, February fifteenth, March fifteenth. That's from seven to eight thirty PM for grades six to twelve. We've got Anime Club. The next session of that is January twenty-fifth. It's the fourth Wednesdays of the month, from seven to eight thirty PM, grade six to twelve. Teen Advisory Group Meetings, first Wednesday of the month. The next one is tomorrow, January fourth, from seven to eight thirty PM. West Orange Teens, age thirteen and up, so it's a great thing to get involved with. Starting on Saturdays, we will be having a, I'm trying to find my notes for that, but there's going to be a tutoring workshop for middle school students. We're calling it Raise the Grades. And it'll be Saturdays from ten thirty AM to eleven thirty AM. So the first one is this Saturday, January seventh, and it does not meet on January twenty-first. And we have a ton of different programs going on all the time. We've got Stuffed Animal Sleepover, Thursday, January twenty-sixth, at four PM, for Martin Luther King Day, January sixteenth. We've got a movie screening of Disney's Ruby Bridges. And all of this is available on the calendar of the library. Creature Comfort, Monday, January ninth, at four thirty PM. Children practice reading to therapy dogs. So we've got Downtime with Disney on Saturday, January twenty-first, at two PM. Finding Dory, the Pixar movie. So there are just many things coming up at the library, and I recommend you go to our library and check it out. Thank you, everybody.
I'm done. Rosie Morelli, Ralph Rhoad, which one is working? This one? Ralph Rhoad. Dave's getting a lot of new programs. He's doing a great job. Senior stuff, we're going to have all kinds of senior programs and what have you. It's a tough fight, but he's going to do it. He's doing a good job. Okay, tonight I'll speak about one topic, the transportation policy for senior citizens and disabled persons. In the past few weeks, the issue and the heightened concerns among the seniors and disabled population is that there is no specific established and documented policy for seniors to disable trans-, and disabled transportation services. Specifically, transportation to doctors and medical facilities. One very serious issue is being transported to doctors who have moved out of the township to Livingston and into the medical groups. Two current examples are the Summit Group on Northfield Avenue, which is less than a quarter of a mile from the West Orange Livingston Line, and the Ambulatory Center, which is across from the Livingston Mall. Now, West Orange does not transport out of the township, and as I have spoken about at previous council meetings, the county transportation, which is what is normally used by our residents to transport within the county, is experiencing some issues and problems. And Mr. Pagliisi's here tonight. He can explain more about what the problems are. Now, because of this serious problem, the method of communication among the population has been a call, to call a friend, who calls a friend, who calls another friend, what happened, who did, where'd you go, what they take you, who do you talk to, whatever. And in more cases than one, the advice is the wrong advice. One thing I'm hearing is there's transportation for one doctor in the Summit Group building, but not to the other doctors who were in the same building. We went through a whole exercise this past week. And then the last one is call the Morelli Dispatch Services. And there's where Morelli hears distraught and frustrated persons who are at the point canceling appointments and just giving up and not going to the doctor or the facility for tests or whatever. I don't need to go into any discussion about what the consequences of doing that. So to Morelli, this is not acceptable. It borders on being inhumane. So tonight, what I'd like to hear from the administration is that they're going to put together something like this, the county put together. It might have been updated since then. We have nothing that's documented. As I said, word of mouth, and all the information gets gobbled up and misconstrued or whatever. I spoke with Anthony Pagliisi. I asked him to get us more for the county, because until they rectify their problems, we're going to have to start using, or continue to use and increase the use of the county buses and transportation. They need to know hours, and here they're covering, they cover everything. The eligibility, travel days and hours, policy, scheduling appointments, getting picked up, returning home, pictures of what the buses look like, the ADRC, other services, and they value input. They will do anything to please the people they transport. We need this. We don't have it. So before I leave here tonight, I would like to hear that this is going to happen, so people know who, what, where, and when. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Please, come, come on down. Who else is over there? Is that Ms. Scarpa, or is that?
Isabel.
Please.
Good evening. Monica Prokowski, seventeen, Bloomfield Way. I'm here tonight on behalf of Maritza Brown, who is unable to attend tonight's meeting. Maritza asked me to share some information about her upcoming Financial Discipline Award Pilot Program for teens. Her organization, Core Spiritual and Wellness, which is a nonprofit, has launched this program for teens who are age thirteen through their junior year in high school, for them and their parents who are West Orange or Orange residents as the pilot. The deadline for entry is January fifteenth. The program is designed to raise awareness of greater financial discipline and awards three cash prizes to the teen who reduces household operating expenses by the largest factor. Workshops are included for both parents and students, and fifty percent of the award is deposited into a new or existing five twenty-nine college savings account. The challenge runs through April thirtieth, and awards are presented in June. Please visit www.coresswc.org for more information and to register before the fifteenth. Thank you.
Maybe read that, that URL one more time, perhaps a little bit slower.
www.cores, C-O-R-E-S, S-W-C, dot org.
Great. Thank you. Please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Isabel Stro. I am a vice president of West Orange Hispanic Foundation, and I just want to motivate and encourage everyone to promote our foundation. Our purpose is to try to help the Hispanic population in, in the community to interact a little more and work together with all the business owners and feel support by a group and try to come and want it to be more productive in town. So we will have in our monthly meeting this Friday, the sixth, and we want, we every month have a speaker of different topics, so this month, our speaker will talk about Obama healthcare to explain to those who yet don't know some of the benefits, but, um, so we motivate you guys to promote our foundation as much as you can and tell our Hispanic residents to feel protected and supported by our group. Thank you.
Could I just ask a quick question? Do you have a website address that you might be able to read out for people?
Yes, we do.
Please?
We do.
Thank you.
WestOrangeHispanicFoundation.org, that's our website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, I'm sorry, Ms. Pagliisi.
Whole different perspective from the front row.
Oh, much different.
Ms. Morelli asked me to pass those out. She said she forgot to hand them out earlier. Uh, my, my name is Anthony Pagliisi. I'm representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Just in response to Ms. Morelli's comments from before, our transportation system has some, I'll characterize them as issues rather than problems, and really what that boils down to is that when people call the service, we currently contract that service with TransDev. They're a transportation company. There are some waits to get through to a dispatcher to make your appointments. Our Director of Senior Services is aware of that problem. She's had numerous discussions with TransDev. The contract is up for rebid this year, and if TransDev does not show that they can fix that problem or issue, they will probably not be awarded the contract moving forward. So that's to give you an update on what Ms. Morelli had mentioned earlier. Now, what I want to share with you is I apologize, I missed your meeting last time. Snow on that Saturday before the Tuesday forced our gingerbread contest to be canceled. So that's where I was. I was at our environmental center, and I'm pleased to report that a West Orange resident, I'm going to butcher her name because I can't pronounce it, but her name is Meskana Gebrejazus. She was the first place winner in the individual child category. So you can be proud of that. And then I had placed a postcard on each of your seats, and I put some more out on the table. Beginning on January seventeenth, we're going to continue with our annual deer management program in South Mountain Reservation and Hilltop Reservation. If you notice, the number of days has been dramatically reduced than in previous years. I think when we first started this program, if I remember correctly, we had eight days that we were in South Mountain, and as you can see, it's been reduced to two, which is January seventeenth and January nineteenth. One new aspect of this year's program is we've included two quote-unquote "makeup days" that in case there's inclement weather on our first two scheduled days, we can go back and continue the program there. In the past, if it's, if the program's been canceled because of weather, the day has just been lost. So that's why we're adding in those two other days. And just to also make you aware of, this is not the only aspect of our deer management program. In South Mountain Reservation and Eagle Rock Reservation, we've put up a number of enclosures that are, you know, they're enclosed with fences, and that allows natural vegetation to grow without being disturbed by deer. And the goal there is to create a seed bank so that as those areas grow, it expands into other areas of the reservation. That does take some time to accomplish, but we are seeing some positive results currently. Well, not currently, because it's the wintertime, but before the weather got cold, we were seeing some positive results. And we also, along some roadways that are not residential, that go through our reservations, we've installed deer reflectors and deer detectors to prevent auto accidents involving deer. That's all I have for it. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else who'd like to speak? Please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, I will close public comment and ask my colleagues in the administration if they would like to respond. And just want to remind everyone up here on the dais that to speak into their microphones for the benefit of everybody in the audience. Anyone like to go? Councilwoman McCartney?
I see Dave has gone, but when I, Dave could be from the library, but at one of the recent Friends Meeting, I did mention to the Chair, Jerry Sweeney, that I believe the library should change their name to Library and Community Center. When I first, when Dave first came on board, he talked about doing exactly what they just put in place about hosting events for the chamber, the Biz Two Point O, which was really just supposed to be a semester last year, ended up being a year-long program, and now they're going into a new year. Girls Who Code, I'm really excited to see that one. That has been shared all over social media, so understandably why it's full. And I hope that also becomes one of those programs that just continues to grow. His teen clubs are doing more than just having the teams meet. They really have connected and, and just keep creating more clubs there. The Art Series, it's just, it really has become a community center, and I'm happy to hear and see the facade in place, and I think maybe his, his dream is coming true. to hear, see the facade in place, and I think maybe his, his dream is coming true. Mrs. Morelli with the comments on the transportation. Jack, this really is for you. We did talk about creating a policy, at least phone numbers. We have health nurses that do go out to visit homes. If they had, maybe not, this is pretty extensive because it's for the whole county, but even just a sheet that, you know, I know that you field calls, Jack, you talk about that all the time, but it, there could be, there be a mailing to seniors in the senior housing, but also in the residents in their homes. We have health nurses that make home visits, they can take them with them, and just create the policy. We do see even in the Chamber, we, even though we're picking up these new Summit Medical, Overlook Medical, they're not housed here in West Orange, and yet their doctors are now part of that group. So we do really need to revisit that. And again, I know you're fielding these calls, so if there is a policy in place, I hope it gets out to our residents. Monica, thank you for the information from Maritza Brown. We met months ago, and then the holidays got in the way. This sounds like a very, it's really an interesting, exciting financial literacy program that she's put together. You explained it well. It is about students. They actually have to commit to attend to these workshops. Parents are involved with it, but they really have to prove that they are reducing finances in their home. So it reminds me of the 2007 Energy Diet that Max Manchell and Amy Simon put together years ago, where you actually had to bring in your bills to show that you were turning off lights and computers and doing different things when they put the township on an energy diet. Maritza Brown is doing the same thing with her organization to have students be more well, more aware of spending money and response, and being responsible for the, for their family income. Isabel, good evening, welcome. Thanks, good to see you. Again, I know the programs that you're putting together there with the historic, I mean historic, with the Hispanic Foundation. Victor mentioned about one of our building inspectors coming to the meetings. I think that was an excellent idea to talk about property maintenance and issues, and just again, an educational outreach. If there's anything, you know, of course you can come and announce your meetings. Fridays are not always so easy to attend, but if there's anything that you think we can share or share ideas, please make sure you reach out. Mm-hmm. And Joe had asked for the website. We, I'm sure it's already linked to the township website, so you know, put a calendar of events out there also. And Anthony, thanks for the information on the gingerbread house. I'm going to have to reach out to that child or that student because what you didn't mention was that the gingerbread house, this competition that they have, these gingerbread houses have to have at least five sustainable elements on it. So I'm going to find out what they were, if it's a rain garden or woodmills or whatever it is, that solar panels, whatever they create with their candies and cookies, it's always a great show. Thank you for that. And I thought you were going to mention about the holiday lights and the visits and how you've exceeded, I forgot what the number was, 759,000 people or something like that that I just read in your newsletter. So congratulations on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to piggyback on the conversation about this, this manual, very, very nicely put. I do want to volunteer my efforts if anybody wants, needs something like this or these graphics to be put together, I can do this. So please let the administration know that, you know, any policy that may exist or I'm willing to, to, to volunteer. Isabel Stroh is here. I'm also a proud member of the West Orange Hispanic Foundation. I do want to mention that she was just appointed to the Downtown West Orange Alliance.
Yes.
Right? So congratulations. And as I mentioned before, the Alliance is doing great work headed by, I see some of our board members here, headed by, spearheaded by Megan. She's the owner of Isabel's Beauty Salon across from the Americana Diner, and really strong clientele, always busy. So thank you for your investment, not only through your business, but as a homeowner in town. So thank you for what you do for us. The, the issue of transportation, as I mentioned, I'll take a look, see what I can do to help, you know, with the graphics and anything pertaining to written policies. I'll, I'll make myself available. Jack, Mr. Sayers, I said that I, I could put something like this together if you need someone to do that. I can put something like this together, like a little manual for seniors.
You know, we already have something that we use, only it's from 2013.
Okay.
So we applied for a grant to do a new brochure, which we're waiting on, and we're going to put together the new brochure once we get the grant.
Okay. Well, I can do something before the grant.
We're in the process of doing that.
Sure.
But it's all, right now, there's, there's something out, there's a brochure out there right now.
Good, good.
That, that people can, can utilize. There's two big problems with this.
Sure.
And I don't know how Anthony, how they discuss doing this. First of all, you got to figure out how you're going to get that to every senior citizen in West Orange. And if you're going to mail it, then that's another cost. You got to find out who the senior citizens are, not just the people in the buildings, but the people who are outside. We service a lot of people outside of senior citizen buildings.
Okay.
So you need to figure out how you're going to distribute these things, put them online, distribute them in the buildings, which is what, you know, we have done in the past. But as I said, the brochure that we have right now, which I think is called West Orange on the Go, it was put together by, by Rutgers in New Jersey, NJIT, I believe. It's, it's old, it's 2013. We do have a policy. Our policy is we don't go out of town unless it's for certain things.
Right.
You know, we do go to the facility in Livingston, people who are on dialysis, we take them there for their dialysis treatments.
Okay.
But other than that, it's very difficult for us to go outside of town because we, as I said, we run three buses a day, and we do a lot of, of, of transportation. And to be going further and further away, that's going to cut down what we're doing for people who want to do things in town. However, I can tell you, over the last two months, we've made some exceptions. We've made an exception just last week, where we took a woman to her, to her appointment up at the Summit Medical Group in Livingston. And we're going to try and figure out a way to make that work. But right now, it's still a process.
It's a work in progress. So on that note, you mentioned that we, we do not go out of town. Does the county policy kick in at that point where they could be called and they could?
Anthony and, Anthony's probably tired of listening to me because I call him every time we get an issue with someone out of town.
Right.
And Anthony picks right up on it for it. We had a woman, as I told you at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Prior to Thanksgiving, who needed to go out of town for something. We couldn't provide the service because it was pretty far out into Livingston, and I called Anthony, and Anthony had their guys go and pick her up. I mean, it's not like, we, we don't leave these people sitting there.
Right.
Saying, no, we're not going to help you. If it comes to us and we can't do it, I call Anthony, and Anthony and I work together and we try and get it done.
Sounds like the key is like, you know, putting out a new publication and making sure that it remains consistent, right? The key is, so that we can get the word out.
It's the publication.
Yeah?
My issue, I think, is, is that people, especially when it comes to senior citizens, and Anthony and I have had this conversation, you know, if you call, there's certain, there's certain procedures you have to follow in order to use this transportation. Some people don't want to follow those procedures. They don't want to file an application, they don't want to give you their information. Other people say, yes, I'll do it and get it done.
Right.
But I can tell you that any phone calls that we get for people who are looking to go out of town, if we can't provide that service, I usually call Anthony, and Anthony gets right on it and provides it. So like I said, we're going to try and figure out how we can do what we need to do. The problem is, is if you go to Summit Group in Livingston, then you go somewhere in South, in, in, on South Orange Avenue, then people are going to say, well, how come you can't go here? And how come you can't? At some point, you got to say, here's our transportation system, and in order to, for us to be able to service all the people in the township, we need to figure out how we're going to do that.
You have to be consistent.
Yeah.
Consistency is important, especially when we deal with our seniors. I deal with seniors every day, and whenever I become inconsistent, we run into problems.
Absolutely.
You know, and it's so difficult to measure as to who's got priority, like who should we take to the Summit Medical Group and who we should. So let, develop a, and thank you, you're working hard to develop a, a process and a, and a policy.
Just this week, we had an issue, and I spoke with the mayor, and his decision was, do it. And we did it.
Sure. Well, in the interim, if you would like to publish something, I'd make myself available. Let me know.
And just, just for the record, I had already spoken to Anthony, and Anthony was ready, willing, and able to help us out. But we took him off the hook this week.
Yeah. Hey, John. So thank you again. Keep working, let's keep working hard and trying to come up with the best policy possible. Dave, Ms. Cubey, thank you for your work on the, with the programming. As you can see, while we weren't able to fund the library with administrative operational funds, we have been able to assist the, the library with capital funds. Those much-needed repairs have been funded, and you know, it makes us feel better that, you know, we couldn't find that extra money in the budget, but you know, we were able to follow up with capital funds, which is, is, you know, it's still necessary funding, and we're still helping the library provide the same quality service. So Dave, continued the good work. Teen programs are usually discretionary funding, and I'm glad that he's taken an interest in teen programming. That's, that's really critical, yeah, in, in our community, so thank you. And Girls Who Code is, is awesome, very marketable scale going forward. I was just talking to someone yesterday about that. They're getting into the industry and they, it's, it's a career. They do applications. It's not like HTML back in our day, you know, it's like, this is really new stuff, like really sophisticated stuff. So Dave, again, good work. Council President, that's, that's the extent of my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Greenough?
Thank you, Council President. Dave, I'm, Dave left, but thank you for the great job you do for our library. And talking about, piggybacking on when Councilman Cirillo talked about how, how much we like to fund and how we were not able to fund as much, but we did it through capital improvements. The one thing is, I've noticed based upon their forecasted budget, the library is not spending up to their budget level at this point in time, and which I'm glad to say. So the, the library is operating efficiently, it's not spending all of its budget allocation, but I'd like to see from the library, if I'd like to see some stats on the usage of the library, the number of people using our reading rooms, children reading hours, youth programs, senior programs. I'd like to get an idea of the, the number and size of the population making use of the services of the West Orange Public Library, which would benefit us when we do our analysis for the upcoming budget season, just like to get an idea. So my kudos to Dave on the projects they're doing. Councilwoman McCartney and Councilman Cirillo, you've addressed the issue on senior transportation along with the business administrator. Just like to say, whatever I can do to help, I would like to, you know, help any way I can, and it's something that I think that is extremely important for our residents, particularly our senior citizens. Monica, thank you for bringing the issue to us. Is she still here? Hi, Monica, thank you. It's a very important issue. I think if anything that we can do as a council to help promote this program, we'd love to really do it. It's something that I really think is something that needs to be addressed, and especially with the youth of our, our community. Isabel, welcome to the Downtown West Orange Alliance. It was good to see you at our meeting two weeks ago. We look forward to your input. Thank you for the great services you and Deputy Mayor Rodolfo Rodriguez do for our community and Hispanic community, and it was a great working and helping out at the toy distribution day for Christmas along with Councilwoman Castellino, Councilman Cirillo, and Councilwoman McCartney. So you know, we're there for you, but it's a great thing that you do and make us more, keep us up to date. You know, please come by each council meeting and, and give us an update of what's going on. We'd like to hear either from you or from Deputy Mayor Rodriguez. Thank you. Anthony, thank you for the county for the things you do. Also, just want to make another announcement. I forgot to do it during my council liaison. This January 12th, it's a Thursday at 7:30 PM, we are having our first meeting of the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. It takes place at the Essex County Educational Center at Turtle Bag Zoo. We thank the county for the usage of it because it gives us a facility we need to make our presentations. So we're starting a year, so we invite the public to come by, voice your opinions and things you think we need to address. So we look forward to seeing you there. It's January 12th, a Thursday night, 7:30 PM at the Essex County Educational Center located at Turtle Bag Zoo. The other thing I'd like to bring up, Anthony, is with the deer hunt and all that, is the question I have, and I should have asked you when you were up here, but if you can just give me an email or respond about, does the county look into other options for culling the deer herd, you know, other than, you know, a deer hunt? Other, you know, there are other options to maintaining, controlling the population, something that I think we'd really be interested in. I know a lot of people are very against hunting, some are not, but it's something I'd like to find out where the county's vision's going, other, doing things to cull the deer population other than, you know, deer hunts. I mean, I like having them on my deck, sharing coffee with me in the morning, but you know, after a while, it gets, it gets kind of tight and busy. The last thing I'd like to ask the, Anthony, is if, I've been trying to get a copy of the county's capital improvement plan, the, the program that shows what the county plans on doing over the next three, four years or five years in relation to, you know, street improvements, intersection improvements, ideas of what the county plans to do over the next few years that we can incorporate into our complete streets program and to give my board on the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee an idea of what direction the county is going in and what types of funding would be available so that we could piggyback on that and help our residents and make West Orange even more mobile and community. And thank you, Council President. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. Yeah, I think, or, and Mr. Sayers, I assume we could get more of these to pass around in our senior buildings with the county brochure and even at the Toby Cat Civic Center where we have a lot of our senior programs during the week. May be a good idea because basically for the county, it clearly spells it out. Monday, Friday, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM scheduling must be done no earlier than 14 days prior and no later than two days prior to the appointment date. So it gives a lot of flexibility if you make an appointment. You, you could have plenty of time to schedule, and even if you make appointment with two days in advance, which is good. Riders, pickup time will be determined at the time you make the reservation for travel. You must be ready 15 minutes before the scheduled pickup time. For an example, 9:15 PM pickup, the rider can expect the bus between 9:00 and 9:30. So very clearly stated out, great information, and we just needed to get it, to get out there. We do, I had a nice conversation with our Director of Health Services, Teresa DeNova, our director, right prior to the holiday. We were working on the grant together that will be, that has been submitted, and just filling her in a lot of, a lot of complaints that I've heard through the past six months and how we can make improvements. And, you know, the, the department is always willing to go above and beyond and do whatever they need and what they can. Funding is some issues, but there's little things we can do, and she's willing to, to do to get information out there to our residents, which is very important. So thank you for fielding the calls, everyone. And, you know, Ms. Morelli, I could just only say that if folks are getting to you directly, because I know people do feel comfortable calling maybe you directly, just get the names over to Mr. Sayers as well, because we are fielding the calls. I know we're trying to make accommodations, and hopefully we'll just keep pushing out the information and things will go a little bit smoother. Changing gears to the library, Dave Cubey, great job. It's been exciting going to the Friends of the Library Board meetings, and we'll be raising some more money so we could keep, continue with the programming. Awesome with Girls Who Codes Club, great to see that. And I have to give kudos to, to Jerry Sweeney. I know he's been calling the superintendent frequently, and we're making great strides with the school district, with a lot of the administrators there, you know, wanting to get more involved. It's a great partnership, the school district with the public library, and we're, we're seeing it with the attendance with, with, with our students. So a great job by all. And I'm very excited that the building is coming out nicely. I see Mr. Lepore back here. I had asked him last, last time I saw him, Mr. Sayers, just, the building's coming out so nicely, but there's little pieces that need to be painted on the, like there's black that's peeling, so if we're, we're going to do it, you know, Mr. Lepore said he could look into getting that painted after, when the weather breaks, which would be nice to make the building look complete. Let's see here. And Monica, thank you for, for coming down and great program, another great program by one of our residents. And, you know, financial literacy not only is important to our, our high school students, but also it's mandated by the state. So there's programs, there's courses that they have to take, and the business department has done a great job with implementing a lot more, lot more courses for has done a great job with implementing a lot more, lot more courses for them up, up at the high school, but this is a great complement to those efforts. Isabella, known you for many years and congratulations, great job that you're doing. I know you'll be an asset with the Downtown Alliance, you'll fit right in. As far as the foundation, maybe also, Councilwoman Cirillo, we've talked about, I've talked about with, with Deputy Mayor Rodriguez about maybe getting the rec director down there to talk to let, let parents know about our programs and I'm sure they'll be more than willing to come, maybe get a representative from the Pal and the Mountain Top, because a lot of times, again, it's, you know, whether it's seniors, youth services, it's getting information out there and, you know, getting the word to all our residents. We go crazy at the Public Relations Commission, just trying to see what little pockets that we could get information out to. So, maybe we bring Mr. Keough and like I said, with Representative Pal and the Mountain Top to one of the meetings to explain all the programs they have with the interpreter. I think they'll, no, but seriously, it will get the information out there and boost up the attendance. And, I don't have the date, I apologize, I didn't pull the flyer off the internet, but I know the Martin Luther King Celebration is coming up in two weeks, if anybody has that information.
January 16th.
Great. And Anthony, again, thank you very much with all that you do with the county. And I have to say, I was driving on grocery today in Cedar Grove and I haven't driven that way in a while. Beautiful job in that park. I can't wait to see it when the sun is shining, but another fine job by the county, beautiful park that you built. So, kudos to the county, thank you. And I'm done. Thank you, Council President.
Just want to say thank you to everyone for the comments. I did want to just follow up with Mr. Sayers, just very briefly, if it's, if it's possible. Could you, could you perhaps send the council the brochure and, and the policy, just so we have more background on what actually is going on? Is, is the, is the brochure in a state that is still accurate, such that you could put it up on the, the town website and people could?
It is on the website.
Oh, it is on the, oh, okay. And it's still, it's still current?
A lot of look at it, you can just go on the website.
Okay. And where would, where would you find that, on the website?
Senior services.
Okay, great, thank you. The other thing I wanted to ask is, I, I know the council has recently approved capital spending to acquire three new buses and I'm wondering if that will expand our fleet to the point that we might be able to provide more transportation services?
It's not going to expand our fleet. What it's going to do is, it's going to give us new buses to use because sometimes our buses break down and they're old. So, what we're doing is we have purchased three new, I think we're doing four new buses or three, Lenny? Four. Three? All right, three buses. And we're just replacing, we're going to be taking the other buses out of service because even if we did have another bus and we'd have to hire another driver, we'd have to, you know, there's a whole.
The drivers, excuse the pun, the drivers drive the cost.
Yeah, so, that's, that's where it comes in.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk? Consent agenda, please?
Yes. Okay. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public minutes of December 20th, 2016. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, none. Resolutions or any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman Castellino, did you have your hand up?
No, did you?
Nope.
I do, I have a question and one resolution. See Mr. Lepore back there?
Certainly, please go ahead and ask and just identify the-
Thank you, Council President. Just Resolution 2116?
Thank you.
The question is about the, what this resolution does is, it, it, it requests a change order for the payment of additional police traffic directors because the rates changed during construction. So, there's an increase of $21,000 and change to the existing contract. And the question is, is that, is that like arbitrary or are we tied to pay that difference in the traffic coverage?
The, the contract has an allowance for, for police traffic directors. When, when the estimate for police traffic directors was put together in 2014, this was part of a community development block grant project, the estimate was $45,000. When the bid documents were put together in 2015, the allowance of, of $45,000 was still kept there, but when it was bid and finally last year, the, by ordinance of the council, the, the rate went up. So, it was the new rate that applied to the project. And what I should have done is when we did this in 2016, just adjusted the allowance for the additional cost that would be incurred. So, any project that we had, had awarded in late 2015 was, was done at the old rate, but anything subsequent to that new rate taking effect in September of 2015, the new rate applied towards that allowance.
Okay. Council President, I just have one follow-up question to that. Do, do we expect any other construction contracts to be affected by the change in policy?
Uh, no, no, I don't.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, my concern was that, because so that was all work that was done on Watson Avenue?
Correct.
All right, so that, so I'm a little concerned, like, how long were they there for? It's not like it's, it's not like it's a major street where there's a lot of traffic. I don't understand the, the need for all the police-
Because every day there'd be two police officers that would have the street closed. We would proceed a block at a time, Washington to Ridge, Ridge to Chestnut, Chestnut up to Samuel Street, there'd always be two officers at each end. So, it, it, it does add up that the street was probably a little over a quarter mile long. There are extra officers then when we're actually milling and paving because at that point that the entire road from end to end is closed down and more officers are then required at the, at the side streets, so.
And how long did that project, project take?
It took approximately six to eight weeks from start to finish.
And every day they had two officers there?
Yes. And, and again, in the case where we are milling or paving, there'd be more.
Okay.
Anything else on that? Because Councilman Green, I think, has a follow-up.
Not on that one, but on another one.
Okay. How about if we let Councilman Green follow up on this specific one and then we'll come back to you, Councilwoman?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Mr. Lepore, net-net, the, all the road improvement projects for the period of same time awarded and money that was allocated and received, net-net, did we have any savings in any other project or is this going to be an overage?
There, there was some savings, but I, on some other projects. I have to go back and, and look at them. And then there are others where I came before you, where I knew we were going to be needing some extra work and there were some change orders that you did approve. This one I, I didn't pick up on until, until the end and wasn't sure why and then it really attributed that the original allowance that was put in, which is then we bill against that allowance at the hourly rate that the uniform traffic directors charge by ordinance.
So, there's no possibility of, of an offset?
Now, the, the only thing that I can try to do with this one on Watson Avenue, it, it was partially funded by a block grant. I could see whether they, there's the opportunity, but they are in the process of closing down their project period, which pretty much coincided with the ending of this project. I'm not sure at this point if I could go back and ask them for additional money. They, it may be something they would consider, maybe something they can't consider because of the, the time that I'd be asking. On other times, they may just say, no, we would not consider, but I will, I'll go back and ask them.
Okay. Is it possible we get a follow, Mr. Lepore, we get a, you know, when you get a time, just give us a follow-up if that's possible?
Sure, I will.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions on this issue? Before I turn it back over to Councilwoman, I just wanted to point out that when you were looking at the numbers, they actually went up quite a bit because when we raised the fees in 2015, it was like up 55%.
Correct.
So, it was a considerable increase and that's why these numbers, if you think those are significant, the 20,000, roughly 20,000, that's because of the, the significant increase that we had.
And then when I went back and looked at the ordinance, it, it indicated in the legislative history that, that rate hadn't increased since 2004.
Yes. Councilwoman, I'm sorry, please.
Well, I apologize because mine is on 2217, my next question for Mr. Lepore, if we're ready to move on.
Oh, absolutely. You, you have the floor.
Okay. So, on 2217 with Cherry Street and, oh, Belgrade Terrace, rather, so, I guess underneath the roadway, there was, I guess, an underneath concrete?
All, all of Belgrade Terrace had a concrete-based pavement underneath it. Some of our mapping in the office showed that only part of Belgrade Terrace had concrete underneath it. Many streets in the Upper Gregory Avenue do have concrete base, but it, it varies. Sometimes they were, sections of roadways were built at different times. So, what, what I had seen was that only part of it had a concrete-based pavement. In reality, it all had a concrete-based pavement. And what we were doing where there was concrete-based pavement, similar to what we did on some other streets under different projects, we would put an asphalt leveling course, we'd put a fabric down over the asphalt leveling course and then we would put the final surface course of asphalt. And, and the purpose of that is to try to prevent some of the joints that are in the concrete from appearing very quickly back through the surface and then it, so it adds to the longevity. So, what happened here on Belgrade is, since the entire roadway was concrete, that fabric and leveling course were put over the entire roadway, although the original estimate would have been for, for less than the entire roadway. So, this addition accounted for the additional concrete pavement that needed a leveling course and needed a fabric on top of it, similar to the way we were doing Belgrade Terrace.
I guess my question is, it goes by what you have mapped out there by your records. I suppose they don't like dig into the ground and to test the roadway?
We didn't do that because we, we feel fairly comfortable with our records. This, these items, the additional asphalt, the additional quantity of both asphalt and the fabric, it was bid on a, on a ton basis for asphalt and on a square yard basis for the fabric. So, if more tonnage was used, you, you'd be based on, on the tonnage cost that was being applied across the whole job and the same thing with the, with the fabric.
Do we now have haunted council chambers?
You'd be surprised.
Someone trying to get in?
Is that someone with their feet hitting the door or something?
No, no, I, 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 I thank you, Mr. Lepore, I just, you know.
Apologies.
I mean, it is what it is, but thank you.
Councilwoman, are you finished talking about that specific resolution? As I think Councilman Green has another question, then we can go back to you. That's okay?
Yeah, I'm just not a big fan of change orders.
I'm sorry. Council President, may I ask a question, not concerning, it's not on this, it's not on this agenda tonight, but just a question about the street improvements in general. Just a quick question.
Sure.
Mr. Lepore, first of all, thank you for all the information you've always given me and responses to the residents who complained about some of the street improvements. My question is, on Woodland Avenue, we've had conversations about Woodland Avenue responded. Now, the contractors coming back in the spring as, based upon your emails, you know, is that being, to any expense being taken into consideration that happened between seeding, you know, and then some of the, in a driveway, you know?
That's, that's true of not just Woodland Avenue, it's, it's true of, of many streets throughout the project. They're going to have to come back, it's not Woodland, Woodland, Woods End Road.
Woods End Road, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes, they will be back to take corrective steps.
And that's been taken into consideration with these contracts? I mean, any?
That, that's part of their obligation. There's, if they, if what they performed didn't turn out proper, then it's, it's their nickel, dime, quarter to come back and fix it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman, again, I, I'll try not to interrupt you anymore.
Oh, oh, no.
If you had any other questions?
No, I'm good, I was good, thank you.
Just that we do have to pull resolution that's listed as DD for public hearing. This is not for Lenny, just that the public hearing on the Downtown Alliance budget would have to be pulled.
Most certainly. Any other questions? I just had a few.
Yeah, the rest of, no, just, I'm not pulling the rest, renewals.
Okay, great. Just a, a couple of quick questions on Agenda Item Y, Resolution 2517, it's a resolution to award a contract for upgrade of the West Orange Police and Fire Department CAD software. It's a little more than $90,000 and it's the cheapest, I believe, of the three that were bid, but perhaps, Mr. Gross, you could just give us a, a layman's description of why we need to spend $90,000 to, to upgrade the, the software, please?
Our current system was, will no longer be maintained and so therefore we, we need to upgrade in order to have, have a working system that was certainly is not, and not just to, to, to yesterday's standards, but to today's standards. You know, and they, by staying with the, the vendor that, that we're currently using, we save the, the cost of having to buy a lot more equipment, a lot more software, fresh, you know, if you, if you, our equipment is worth those other prices, we've just already invested in it. So, this is incrementally a, a cost for us and it just makes sense.
And what will it, what were some of the, maybe the top two or three capabilities that the, that the upgrade will give us, other than the fact that they'll maintain the software going forward?
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's maintenance of the software, but it's, but it's more than that. I mean, I'm not going to speak to the actual specifics of the, the applications, but, but I can tell you that, for instance, I mean, it, it's, software that was built five years ago, engineered five years ago, doesn't, you know, doesn't work the same as new software. So, these upgrades will, will bring more efficiencies in terms of how we're doing the current work that we're doing. There are other upgrades in it and I'm not first in all, you know, the sophistication of that, but I can tell you that I do know that it is required because, you know, bottom line, we're working in the police department. When, when there is a problem, you have to have somebody to call and fix it and unless we do this, no one's going to come fix this in the future because the old software is just not supported. So, we have to make a change. It's not like we're, we're choosing to make a change. We have to make, we have, we have not, we have to do something. We could make a total change if we set it, that's, you know, upwards of 300,000 or more, ultimately. This is the best choice for us.
Okay. Councilwoman?
Thank you. Do you, is training included on that with the upgrades? Are we getting training services?
Yeah, there's training, there's, there's training.
They'll come to train our staff?
A lot, it has usually trained trainer, I mean, you know, we, we'll have one or two people that become proficient in it and then they train the rest.
What do we send, okay, so we send our, our folks out to the training sessions, they come back and turnkey it?
Yeah, a lot of it's, and it's not so, not even so much today, just like we're going through with the, with the Kronos, everything is online training now, you know, a lot of, a lot of phone calls, you know, and video, video calls. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot, you don't actually send people out anymore.
But they have a strong support staff, so if our staff gets, you know?
Look, we've been doing this for a long time, you know, we've had, there's good and bad with, with any company and, you know, there's, there was some desire to potentially go to other software, but bottom line, the, the cost differential was just too much to overcome.
Yeah, I think the other two bids were over 200,000 each, I think.
Plus, plus, plus I think there were other costs embedded that weren't even reported, you know, that would push us up near 300,000 by the time we're done.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. So, John, we tend, when we see these resolutions, I tend, we seem to be working in piecemeal fashion. Do you have an overall vision of all of these upgrades that we're doing? Are we consolidating and you see it actually happening?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, you know, remember, council gave us money of two, 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 three years ago now, time's flying, to actually invest into our, our backbone. And that backbone is what we're, everything we're looking at now and both, we have one system now. So, there's, and this isn't really piecemeal in the sense that, I mean, this is, you know, you, every department has what I'll call proprietary software. You know, it's, it's very specific to that department. And we looked at possibility of like getting one vendor to cover everything and the problem with that is, is that they're generalists. They do, they do everything eh, okay. If you really want the top stuff, you gotta, you gotta focus on the people that make, you know, that, that want to do or, or, or give you the products that are, are very specific. They're, they, they tend to be more energetic and, and they'll do more and you'll get more out of them. So, the answer is yes, we have a vision, we've come a long way, which we have a long way to go. This particular one is not part of the vision per se, other than to make sure that our police department stays at the forefront of the technology, but it is certainly something that's very important.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman, did you have another question?
I don't, no.
Good. My other, my other question or my, the other resolution I wanted to ask a question about is Agenda Item BB, which is Resolution 2817. It was a somewhat late addition to the, to the agenda in terms of getting the, getting the actual resolution. And so I just wanted to flag it because it's for a million dollars and not, just thought everybody should know about it, but maybe you could just talk a little bit about the resolution? But maybe you could just talk a little bit about the resolution?
Yeah, that's, it is, it is, and has been, housekeeping item. We do this every year, first years. It is basically to put money aside in case we have tax appeals during the year that we have to then go to perhaps bonding for to cover. Past two years, we have, we've passed this resolution, and we have not needed to utilize it. I dare say, I will tell you that this year, there's no doubt in my mind that we will, we have been, I think we talked about this a few meetings ago, that we're winding up some big tax appeals that should hit this year, are hitting this year. And that's gonna put to bed a lot of what I call bleeding in terms of these us valuations of these commercial properties. And, because what happens is if we don't, if we, we have appeals that are out there, and we don't settle them and lower our values, we're, to the extent that we're going to lose those appeals, we're setting up, you know, additional monies that we're gonna have to pay back. And that's not fair to the rest of the taxpayers. So, yeah, and ultimately will be a tax increase. So this year is the year where we're going to, we will definitely be coming back. It's gonna be significant, it's gonna be more than a million dollars, there's no doubt about that. And we'll see where it ends up. But again, I think it's, we're planning to do it this year because we have payments on previous tax appeals that are expiring this year. So then we'll have the money next year to pay it. So this is part of a plan to get us to a point where we don't have all these outstanding obligations.
Any other questions? I just wanted to pull one item, it's Agenda Item T, Resolution 2017, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Services Agreement with Fairview Insurance Agency Associates. Does anybody else have anything they want to pull?
No.
As Councilwoman said, we also need to pull the public hearing for the adoption of the Downtown West Orange Alliance Special Improvement District. So those are the only two?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Ms. Council President, can, Council, Madam Clerk, can it be noted on the vote taken here that I'm abstaining, not from number 2217, which is my street?
2217, so you're recusing yourself from that, so?
Right, sorry, thank you, Council President.
Ken, is that allowed?
Sure.
Form one, okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Paul Kiba, I approve that the consent agenda is implemented. Okay, so we have Resolution 20-17, which is Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Services Agreement with Fairview Insurance Agency to serve as insurance brokers for the township for the period of January 1st through December 31st, 2017. Council President, can you pull that?
Yes, thank you. Those of you who've been watching the council meetings know that I'm not in favor of the way that we choose and compensate the, our insurance broker, our insurance advisor. And I just wanted to pull this because I don't want to be on the record as approving this. These guys have been providing these services since before the turn of the century. They get, I'm not sure, several hundred thousand dollars a year is perhaps overexaggerating, but certainly a few to several hundred thousand dollars a year in compensation through the insurance that they are involved in writing for us. And there's another program out there where we could actually hire a broker and pay them at a much lower cost directly, as opposed to paying them indirectly. And so I just want to keep bringing this up because I hope eventually that my colleagues will want to give this more consideration. We talked about it a few years ago, but I just wanted to bring it up. And I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I did just want to bring it up. Does anybody, anybody else here on the council have any discussion?
That you brought up, I'd just like to hear from Mr. Gross's point of view in regards to a councilman's statement. You know, why does administration feel strongly about this way of going about?
Philosophically, you can make a decision on how you pay your brokers. You can pay a broker on a percentage of premium. You can pay your broker on a flat per person basis. Or you could play, you could just pay a broker, you know, some fee for service. There's three different ways. There's a lot that goes into these decisions. We have our medical, which is based on a fee per head. We have medical, I mean, prescription, and dental, which is based on a fee as a percentage because we buy it from, you know, a service company, and that's their structure. That doesn't mean we have to use it, but that is the structure that they use. And we don't use the per, a flat fee. You know, the real question here is, do you feel that your broker is giving you the services, you know, outstanding services? We believe we are. We've now seen, this year, we were seeing a decrease in our medical expenses. Overall, you know, the broker brought us into this concept of going for self-insurance. And overall, over state health benefits programs and other programs that we would have been in, we've saved a lot of money in terms of that. So it's an issue of performance as well that has to be considered. And we believe that this, in our current situation, we've got a really positive track record. I mean, our medical costs are really, really in control. And a lot of towns, and they haven't been for a long time. And a lot of other towns haven't seen that. So, you know, I think to round about, I can't dispute the methodology that the council president is suggesting that we could go by. But I can tell you that the administration is very satisfied with the types of service, and we just don't see a reason to move away from that at this point in time.
I've had this conversation with him before, so I just wanted him to state it for the public, just so you think, you know, we do question it. I know it's a preference on the administration, so at this time, I'll still be supportive of it.
By the way, we do, it is, we do our request for proposals. You know, it's out there, it's not that we, you know, we don't even try. If someone came to us and blew our shoes off, you know, that's possible. But right now, we're very.
You're not complacent, you do diligence, good.
We just think that they've done a very strong job with the council, historically and particularly recently.
Councilman, do you have any?
Well, just to your comment, Council President, I was going to say the same thing. It seemed like deja vu. We had this conversation at our last meeting, we did see a decrease in the expenses. And John did explain last time that he was looking at a compilation of things that you have expressed interest in. So I'm pleased to see a decrease in the expenses, and I too would vote for this. And appreciate that John looks at the three different methods that we have discussed.
Jack just reminded me to, it's important, and this is not usual. This is in my 25-year career, the first time that I've seen brokers do this. And I guess they actually provide day-to-day service to our employees.
Excuse me, Mr. Gross, could I just get you to speak, yes, thank you.
They actually provide day-to-day service to our employees. And that takes a lot of strain off of our departments as well. You know, so they're providing, and it makes sense because they're handling a lot of the details anyway in terms of, think, coverages and things of this nature. So it works out well. But I can tell you that if we were to make switches, we would have, you know, we would certainly have to go to companies that were heavily invested in personnel to handle a town our size. And to, you know, the number of calls and inquiries that we get alone, not mention what they get, it's significant. So there is a significant service here as well. So I just wanted to point that out, to the extent that there's, you know, when there's a discussion about the, you know, how much is the fee per year, it sounds like a pretty big number. It is, but there's a significant amount of personnel cost on their end in order to service us. So we have at least one full-time person as well as other staff that wants to do this as well.
Ms. Councilman?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I just want to make mention that when we were going through financial difficulties around 2010, through this contract, we were able to save over $565,000 through their recommendation to move us from the state health benefits program, which was detrimental to us because of our loss record. So we need to keep that in mind, and I think that that's one, I guess, strike, not strike, but that's a checkmark in their favor. So I'm still confident that this organization or this company can continue to try to find sources of savings for us. Have we experienced any situation where our insurance has gone up since? Or, you know, are they still finding or being proactive in giving us recommendations as to where we can find, or continue to find savings?
Look, there's no doubt, we've had record of losses, and, you know, our losses haven't always gone down. Sometimes they've gone up, but they've gone up at a lower rate, frankly, when they have gone up, than the rest of the market. And particularly health, which we're still below in terms of New Jersey health benefits. And again, this year, we have a reduction in rate on our medical, which is almost unheard of. So we've done something right.
Well, thank you. Council President, thank you.
Anybody else? I would just say, just to close off, you know, a lot of these things, you know, you can argue about the details. One of the, one of the chief elements of my recommendation is to introduce a significant amount of competition into the process. So you would have, you might very well keep this firm. Obviously, they, you feel like they've done a good job, and that certainly will be something to be weighed. You could still have that firm in our employ, but it might be at a much lower price point for us. I mean, I haven't done the math yet, but I think that the commissions we're paying them this year are over $400,000.
Yeah, I haven't done, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised, although there was a reduction this year. So, you know, again, it's significant. I'm not saying for a second that it's not significant. It's, but it's certainly not atypical either.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 20-17?
Motion moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Catalina?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokoviek?
No.
And the next item pulled was 30-17, Public Hearing and Adoption of the Downtown West Orange Alliance Special Improvement District 2, I'm sorry, 2017 budget.
Just a second, Ms. Brill. Yes, just to ask a quick question. I would think it would be more helpful to people if they heard Ms. Brill.
Hi, everybody, I'm Megan Brill, Downtown Alliance Executive Director. Usually, we do a full-blown PowerPoint presentation, but I appeared at almost every single council meetings this year, so we forego the full-blown PowerPoint. But I do have a couple of things that I want to bring to your attention, and then I'll take any questions you have about the budget. You should know that the budget is the same as it was last year, and it doesn't contain any increases in salary for me or Joe. The goal of the Downtown Alliance is to provide support and promote the businesses along the Main Street corridor. We have 11 volunteer trustees, and we manage four teams with the intention to execute goals in marketing and promotions, economic revitalization, design, and organization. We currently have 182 properties, it used to be 181, we added AutoZone this year. So it's 182 properties, 253 storefronts, and over 300 total businesses when you count second and third floor business owners. I became the AD in 2013. And in 2013 and 2014, together with the Board of Trustees, we worked on strengthening our organization to provide a strong foundation on which to build upon. We recruited key leaders like Kevin Cruz to work alongside with existing trustees, John McAvoy, John Bober, Lisa DePano, Yolanda Baretto, David Drill, and Jared Guarino. In 2015, we concentrated our efforts on marketing and promotion. We finally convinced longtime volunteer Mike Breck to be a trustee, and he came on as a trustee early in 2015 and became the Promotions Chair. Each year, we have two major fundraisers, the Mayor's 5K Run and the West Orange Street Fair. The Street Fair has become the signature event for the township. The goal of the Street Fair has always been to celebrate the achievements of Thomas Edison and the National Historic Park. Our partnership with the museum and the Friends of Edison has proved to benefit all three organizations, and we have more people coming downtown than ever before. In 2016, we concentrated our efforts on economic revitalization, wherein we identified vacant storefronts, attempted to recruit businesses to fill those storefronts. The ER team held its first-ever Realtor Open House. And we started 2016 with 41 vacant storefronts and currently have 22. Our organization has had the privilege to work with Joe Fagan, our township historian. What can we say about Joe? We started, we started working with Joe, and he has been a vital part of all things that we do within downtown and is an integral part of our plans for 2017. This year, we're gonna concentrate on design, physical improvements downtown. We have gathered a team of residents and business owners that will work tirelessly, take to the streets, to improve how downtown appeals to everyone else. The first quarter of 2017, we will issue our new design guidelines. These guidelines will help steer store owners, property owners, architects, and engineers to create storefronts that are pleasing to the eye and keep the integrity of the building intact. In addition to, the design team will issue letters and work face-to-face with our store and property owners to spruce up specific storefronts. The facade grant program is a line item in our budget and is a crucial part of making sure that our business owners have the opportunity to improve their storefronts and make them more appealing to residents and outsiders. This year, we welcomed two new trustees, Lewis Dorff and Isabel Stroh. Isabel, you met a little while ago. And we look forward to their contributions in the coming year. We need everyone to find something that they like downtown, support it financially, do it once a week, and tell their friends. Together, we can achieve all things, catch the energy, and the future looks bright downtown.
Very clear.
I will take questions, if you have any, or you could just vote, yes.
Anybody?
Let's have a quick question. I saw your.
I can't see you, Victor.
Yeah, can you hear me? I know that you said to talk loud today, right?
Hi.
You mentioned, I saw your budget, income increased from the assessments from 2000?
It didn't.
You were expecting it to increase?
Yeah, you know what, it ended up leveling out. We expected an increase because of AutoZone, and we did get more income out of the AutoZone property, but others decreased.
My quick question is, are there properties out there that are not being assessed? And if there are?
You know, it's funny because.
Would you expect additional income revenue?
So one of the things that we have to look at is where are there properties that are holes within the footprint? And our economic revitalization team, that's one of the action plans that they have, that they're going to scope out exactly what is within the corridor. And there are holes in it, so there are streets that were left out for a number of reasons. And we hope to fill them in. Whether that project gets done within this coming year, I did speak with John Gross, and should we get an ordinance passed through the council that says that these properties are allowed to be in the CID? We could assess them in 2017, but I didn't count on them. And we don't really know exactly who they are and what that assessment would be.
Yeah, do you have a timeframe as to when you would want to identify?
It's on the, we know specifically the streets that aren't included, whether those are properties that really would impact. I could tell you that there's like two scales of street, of assessments within the corridor. One's that, like David Drill's building, where we're getting $8,000 and $9,000. And then others, where we get $300 or $400. So one property won't mean, could not mean everything, but it could definitely help us. But, you know, we don't want to raise anyone's taxes without a specific plan and making sure that we can absolutely benefit those businesses and those properties that are within the corridor.
That was my follow-up, exactly right. I wanted to ask if, you know, if some of the assessment revenue.
Uh, I, I wanted to ask if, uh, you know, if some of the assessment, our revenue were to increase, where would you, uh, earmark, uh, those funds? And also, my last question was, um, what kind of feedback are you getting from the business owners with respect to, uh, you know, the, the layout of the activities?
Yeah.
What, what kind of feedback are you getting from the business owners?
Well, it's, it's not an easy feat and, um, we did invite all of the business and property owners to our annual meeting. Um, nobody showed up to come. Uh, we do have, when we looked for replacing Jason Robinson, the board and I really thought it was important to include store owners and folks that live downtown in our board and we found Isabel and she's a perfect fit. Having a business owner that understands how everyone is knocking on your door, begging for money, or telling you should do this and you should do that. So, we think it's a key place for us to start colessing that, but I could say that we don't have a, a plan in place to be able to add to our assessment.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Council President.
Councilwoman?
Yes. Um, so, being on the Promotion Committee, I'm glad to see the money in the budget there, but I, I know I hadn't made a comment to you and just that you could move money from one column to another if need be, because, you know, my concern is with economic development and so if need be, if there's some kind of, if you want to hire a consultant or something, you'll have the vocal room if need be.
Right, so... Yeah. Well, we have, um, we had $8,000 in our budget for E.R. last year and we reduced it to six. The $8,000 was in, for the most part, paying for a consultant to help recruit businesses for us. Um, $6,000 is going to be, you know, a real grassroots effort and a lot of the billing in the assessment gap is going to happen within E.R. and we're looking at the footprint and figuring out, do we add properties such as two-family housing to the corridor? Those are the kind of things that E.R. is going to tackle this year. It's very easy for us to send emails and letters out to Realtors to invite them to come downtown. Um, that's not a costly thing. The costly part of the $8,000 was the consultant.
Okay. I guess my, uh, where did Mr. Sares go? I, I know we had mentioned talking about using the planner to assist you with additional hours in previous conversations. I assume that comes out of our budget...
Wait, additional...
Using the planner?
The planner, Mr. Greigle.
Right.
I assume that would come out of our budget, not, not yours, I'm assuming, but I have to ask Mr. Sares about that.
Right, and actually, we're going to need Paul to take a look at the design guidelines, which will be a, a good chunk of his time, I would expect.
Okay, and, let's see, do I have one last question? Oh, and do you have a list that you could send us of all the new property? Because I know you had a lot of vacancies filled this past year. Can we get a list of that?
Yeah, we're, actually, the Promotions Committee and Economic Development were working on a, a membership brochure. Um, yeah, I can, I can send it to you.
Okay, great. And great job by the whole committee.
Thank you.
It's been, it's been a pleasure to work with all of you and it's, it's just amazing the time you spend and the dedication of everyone and just the, the buzz has been created and should, you know, I'm looking forward to 2017, so, great job by all of you.
And thanks, Michelle. I think that it's really important that, you know, you see me up here a lot, but there's 11 people behind the scenes working really, really hard that, you know, pushes us up and is out in the community. We've seen the Chronicle article about, um, Bronson and 285 Main Street and the Tap article, which was the copy that I, that I handed out. Those types of things are because we have feet on the street. You know, people know about us, they know how to get to us because we're out there in the community and the vast majority of them are all volunteers, they have a full-time job and then they spend that time over and above with me and us downtown.
And I just want to add into, you know, Thursday nights, a few of you here, John, Kevin, you know, Joe, Mike, you know, you're down there on, every Thursday night in the summer, out there and lugging tables and chairs and just trying to make a, just trying to, you know, get a buzz out there for, for what you're doing in downtown. And, uh, it, it is growing and it's working and Rome wasn't built in a day, neither will downtown be, but, uh, it will be there soon, so, great job by everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you, Council President. Megan, thank you for a great presentation and keeping the budget to what it was last year. And also, again, I know we're going to talk about rolling out the CID, increasing the footprint and, and talking about that, but also the impact on, on the merchants and what we'll do. The one thing is, is that what, what's not being said here is the synergy of the members of the board, that they do work full-time jobs and do, do a second full-time job and each one of them brings such a talent and an effort and a synergy that people aren't looking at Main Street, people aren't looking at downtown. You know, the business attributes that, that John McElroy brings from, from his tremendous business experience, the financial overview and the economic development that Kevin Cruz brings to the Down, the Downtown Alliance, the, the marketing expertise, the focus and the ideals and pooling in the Edison and the other concepts as Mike Breck that he brings and, of course, the history and the mobility of the Township of West Orange is, you know, our wonderful Joe Fagan, you know, each one, and, you know, Isabel, which she'll bring as a business owner, the input. It's just a thing is there, people are seeing what's going on in Main Street and, and what the Downtown Alliance has done as a way in that synergy on, on, on Main Street and bring more people into it and the more and more that we promote what we do, the more successful the Street Fair gets, the more important that we build new partnerships, not only with the Edison National Park, but with other organizations throughout the township, it's going to best benefit the, the merchant and, and the Main Street corridor. And that Main Street corridor will work out. The one thing I'd like to see more eventually, Megan, and we've spoken about that, is we need, the merchants need to come. The merchants need to come and tell us, you know, not us, us always going out there, but they need to come to our meetings and say, "Look, I need this." And, and that's what we have to do and that's going to be the kick in the, you know, that we need and that everybody needs. So, I'd like to see us work more on that and getting the merchants and our members, our CID members, to come to our meetings and actively voice their opinion, not just when we throw a big, you know, event, not when we give them a meal, but come to our regular meetings with a bottle of water and let's do that.
We do, I, I think it's difficult for them to get out and leave their stores to come and work on, um, trying to face us, but we're, we go and meet them. You know, we, we meet where they, where they go and, um, that has been successful. The Design Committee is going to get, you know, in-store owners' stores and really give them the hard truth about what their storefronts need to look like and what the rules are about their storefronts and the design guidelines are going to really greatly help us. As we expand our, you know, Latino community with Isabel and, you know, there's a, a bunch of folks now that feel a lot more comfortable talking to other business owners and, um, and we get the benefit of that. And you're right, we need, we need to hear what they want. We think we know a lot. We don't know everything and we're absolutely open and welcome to hearing, um, what, what people need and if this budget isn't providing them with what they need, then, you know, we'll make it happen.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. R.
Meg, thank you for this article. It really highlights so much that has happened over the past year, really, um, you know, we see it and we do feel the energy, so appreciate that. I do, really do, really want to see the design guidelines and I want you to share them with Planning Board members and particularly our acting planner. I think you have done yeoman's job, um, on a lot of this. Paul Greigle is also the acting planner for other municipalities and, you know, he, he's a wealth of information. So, I, you know, I want that meeting to happen and I want him to share ideas with other marketing tools, the outstanding Commercial Realtor Seminar that was last year, we learned so much there. Um, and again, marketing, uh, just marketing tools, um, we need more of that. So, we have the, also the Plan Our Agenda for Central Avenue, the redevelopment plan. We talked about the Highland Avenue Station. I know you're not ready to expand the corridor, but we need to expand the corridor because it goes right into the Valley and there's so much happening over, uh, Central Avenue in the Valley, too. Victor and I served on the Valley Preservation Program. We had hundreds of thousands of, I think it was a $500,000 grant. The governor pulled $100,000 out of that a couple of years back and we don't have that anymore, but, you know, it, it really, it was too separate, but, I mean, the Downtown Alliance was one and the Valley Neighborhood was something else, but it really does need to expand across the, the corridor because so much is happening there as well. To the point about, you know, as a business owner, it is difficult to attend those meetings and to, uh, be at so many things that you want to be at, but I'm wondering if you have a suggestion box or something on your website that the, your, um, property owners would be able to reach out to you, you know, if you send out some kind of survey or questionnaire to them?
You know, it's so funny because people do email me and they Facebook us a lot. Um, I've gotten more times, I think, this past year, more business owners that are, just have like a business out of their house outside of the corridor that want to get signed up on the Downtown Alliance, you know, website. And I, now I have a standard reply because it happens so often that I, you can't, I can't advertise, I can't include you. So, the Organization Committee is working on a specific sponsorship where, you know, folks like that can pay a little bit of money any year and be part. They wouldn't have the same, um, relationship that the property owners have with the Downtown Alliance, but they would have, you know, some way to get better educated and teamwork and that camaraderie that we know just, you know, resonates and generates lots of excitement. So, um, but yeah, I'll look at the website and see if there's a way we can...
That was just a suggestion. The other thing would be the Community Asset Map that we've talked about, where you would roll over a Google map and find the businesses, either ones that are in your CID properties or, you know, the Chamber's doing that on the Chamber website, um, Community Asset Mapping. And if someone's not a Chamber member or not, uh, in your downtown, they could still be part of that.
Yeah. It was a surprise to me when I looked at the, uh, the design guidelines and, um, you know, our consultant told me that we needed a digital map of the corridor. We don't have a digital map of the corridor. We have a map that, like, there's going to be lots of really good things that come out of the guidelines.
Good. Get them out.
Get them out.
Get them out. And thanks for keeping this static.
I'm tired.
Everybody ask questions? Just to follow up on some of this, Ms. Brill, uh, you know that from previous meetings, I'm a big metric guy and I can see, uh, this year in 2016 that the vacancies went from 41 to 22. And I think last year, if I recall correctly, they would basically have stayed the same around 40 or 41.
I'm sorry, Joe, I'm not hearing you very well.
Okay, I'm sorry. No, I'm the one that's telling everybody else to talk into...
I got 41, 22.
Yes. I, I was just saying, I'm, I'm the metric guy, so I like to see lots of metrics, uh, because I, I think that's a, a good management tool. In your report, you say that the vacancies have gone this year from 41 at the beginning of the year to 22.
22, okay.
And last year, in 2015, uh, the vacancy pretty much stayed the same throughout the year. There's probably ups and downs, but it was roughly 40 or 41.
No, it went from 41 down to 22.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, in 2016, that's what it did. In 2015, it stayed basically the same.
Um, I don't have that number exactly. Did you look in the budget presentation?
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
Yeah. I, um, I don't think it was the same, um, but it, it, there, there wasn't a lot of movement in any of, any of the years, the past. This year, we had more properties getting exchanged, more, you know, a lot more, um, changes in, in the, the actual properties and the business owners.
That's what I wanted to ask you about is what, what drove the halving of the vacancies this year?
What drove halving the vacancies or filling the vacancies?
As in, as in, cutting them in half. When I say halving, I mean, cutting them in half.
I think, I think that people are more hopeful about investing in their businesses. I think that the credit market opening up, giving people the opportunity to get mortgages. You can see that buildings sold from property owner to property owner, where for the first three years, there was, I think, one change in the three years. So, I think that there, you know, things are getting better and people want to, you know, invest. I mean, Jerry, Kevin, you know, John, you guys have anything else you want to, want to add to that? Um, I mean, I really think that that's, that was, that's the big... Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, sorry. Um, if you remember the last, good evening. And by the way, congratulations on all of you in being re-elected and just the president on your appointment. When I was here the last time, um, we talked about the opportunities that are presented in West Orange and in the corridor and I think what we're seeing is more and more people who are being priced out of Montclair and, uh, Soma, South Orange Maplewood, if you're not part of the Cognosity. And they're now coming over here because the opportu, and you have to have a little bit of that pioneer spirit and we saw this in, um, uh, the proprietor of, of, uh, City Works Men's Store talking about having a little bit of a pioneer spirit. And I stopped into his, his store the other day and asked him how things were going and he said, "They're really going very well." He's doing, you know, a, a good level of business in his storefront. He's also doing a lot of internet business and that seems to be the formula today. You know, you, you have to have that ongoing stream of revenue from other than street traffic, particularly where we're at today. So, you know, with a lot of these, these people who are coming in is, Megan said, you know, you have to be a little bit hopeful, you have to have a little bit of that pioneer spirit, you want to be the first in and the economics are favorable because the rents are not that high. Okay? Now, the next question is, how do we keep that momentum going? You know, we've gone, we basically cut those, those, um, vacancies in half. The next step is, how do we have it again or get it closer to zero? That's a hard question to answer and it's one that, that, you know, we've been putting a lot of thought into because we're presented with a lot of very unique challenges in this corridor. And a lot of that has to do with the size of the business and the, or the size of the storefronts. They don't, they're not really conducive to having, and I'm not suggesting big-box retail or, you know, we have one open around the corner here with AutoZone, but they're not, you know, that's probably not what we're going to get. We're still going to get more of those mom-and-pop kind of stores. Um, I don't know, you know, if you've got a national chain or not. We, we solicited some, some people with our, our, uh, marketing activities, um, uh, this year, you know, regional chains. Um, it's still going to be primarily mom-and-pops, but the configuration of a lot of these stores is very, very difficult. They're very small. So, you know, we, we have to really put our, our heads together and think about, and when I say together, I mean all of us, we're all in this together, guys, okay? And this is something that, that going forward, we need to, you know, to really start to pull together at the administration, with the council, with the Downtown Alliance and think about what is the strategy going to be for the downtown corridor going forward? And, you know, what is the, what is the plan? We're going, we do a lot of bits and pieces here, we need to pull it together going forward. You know, we have a lot of conversations, you know, among us privately and have lots of things going, lots of ideas, we need to pull this together because it is kind of a, a unique strategy. I will say this, you know, and I've gone on record many, many times as saying that the Valley is the hidden gem here, okay? And that seems to be evolving and there's a lot going on, a lot of restaurants and, you know, the, the arts community and, and the, um, you know, the, the Valley redevelopment, probably got that wrong, but you know what I'm talking about. So, there's a lot going on down there and that's sort of a, you know, an entity unto itself. It's the rest of it that is going to be the challenge. And I, and I wish I could stand here and say, "Here's what we're going to do right now." We don't have that answer, we're working on it though. Um, you know, getting Paul Greigle, I think, involved in helping to steer us. He's doing, you know, some great things in some other communities. You know, I watch Seaside Heights very closely because I own some property there and what's going on down there, it's a much smaller community, but it's a community with problems just like, or challenges, opportunities, just like we have. And there's a lot going on, so I'm going to pick his brain and find out, you know, how we can employ some of these things and get that strategy together and make it work, make it go and, and get these storefronts filled. So, you know, it's, um, it's, some of it's just dumb luck, you know, people wander in here and they see, "Wow, I can open a store and it's relatively inexpensive and we've got a lot of things going on." You know, when we did our marketing thing with the, uh, the Open House and Realtors, I got calls, Megan got some calls, referred one to me and I sat there, you know, and I listened to the pitch and I said, "Yeah, you know where I think you should be? You should be on Northfield Avenue or you should be, you know, Pleasant Valley Way." You know, there was a, an opportunity up there. They don't fit the downtown footprint. So, it's good for everybody if we can bring somebody into the, the town, but we have some very unique challenges, um, down there. And then, I think there are a lot of opportunities, too, because in our conversations with different property owners, they're interested in selling their property, either monetizing it, taking the money off the table, whatever their motivation is, and, you know, they would, they would sell it to the right company, the right... And, you know, they would, they would sell it to the right company, the right developer, you know, for the right purpose. And they, and they care deeply about this community because they're vested in it. So they don't want to just sell to anybody. Okay? So, you know, there are a lot of opportunities that are out there. Now, that's kind of a long-winded answer to your very short question, but, you know, it's, it's, it's the next, the next hurdle is going to be the tough one to get to from 22 to zero.
I'm sorry, I'm, this, I, just so you know, my facial distress is what I was doing is, I don't know if you can hear, but it sounds like that one of the cell phones or maybe a couple of the cell phones in, in here, up on the dais is, is causing the feedback, which I get, I hear complaints about sometimes on the video. So I was just, there it goes again.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's what I was doing. So I apologize.
That's okay.
I was apologizing to you. Just a couple of follow-up questions about that. On, on the reduction of the vacancies, what, have you done an analysis or, or do you have an idea of what role the Alliance played in these reductions? I know you said dumb luck and I'm sure it wasn't, you know, that, that's not analysis, but I just.
There's sort of an answer to anticipating your question. No, we can't say that we walked somebody into the, you know, and that's really not what we do. Now, I will tell you that there are some people who've come to us and, you know, we have helped them maneuver through, you know, the, the building department, you know, the second floor, do some things like that. You know, the actual recruiting of business, going out and saying, well, I'm going to bring you in because I got a space for you. That's really not what we do. And if those opportunities come up, the first thing we're going to do is recommend that they go talk to a Realtor, you know, that, that really knows. Because the last thing we want to do is botch it, you know, and say the wrong thing or, and, you know, so we're not, we don't really look at it as, you know, score one for us and, you know, that sort of thing. That makes sense.
Okay.
I have, I have one thing that I want to add to that. When our fact sheet went out, I'm sorry, guys, I know you wanted this to get out of here. The, our fact sheet went out to a whole bunch of different businesses and it was out online. And I talked about, you know, the, the economic benefits of being in West Orange. So, karate school from West Caldwell came, that happened to be West Orange residence. She came, she met with, with me, I met the husband, I met the whole family, we spent a lot of time with them. And it ended up that we couldn't find a space that was, you know, move-in ready for them and they ended up being in Pleasantdale. That's happened a lot, you know, quite often, that people can get a connection to us or to something that they can get their arms around and they're like, wow, somebody's talking to me, somebody cares about me, someone's going to help me. And that's the kind of connections that we've been able to do. Same thing with Josefina and Roger Stevens. They were this close to being in Montclair and they didn't get the support that when we met them, we took her to training with us, we brought them in, we walked her, you know, we walked them around. So there's, there's that handholding and that ability that if we can't help them, we can find somebody to help them. And, you know, it's, it's resonated with, with folks.
Okay. Mr. Cruz, you, you mentioned something about soliciting, I guess soliciting either Realtor, I'm sorry, retailers or, or property owners. Was that a formal program?
I'm sorry, say the beginning part of that again, you know?
Yeah, she was addressing it to me. The, well, we did the, we did the retailers' open house. And with that then, you know, we had a whole list of retailers that had, that had been generated that we handed over to commercial Realtors. We'd also sent out as part of that, a letter directly to some of those businesses under the, the cover of the mayor's signature. And that generated some phone calls to us. So when they called, then, you know, we engaged them in some conversation, told them, you know, what we're all about, where we thought some opportunities might be, given, you know, what their needs were. And again, I, I probably had three conversations, which, you know, I mean, if you send out a hundred letters and you get, you know, 3% response, that's okay. You know, and it happened to be more than that, but regardless, I had three conversations and all of those, all of those businesses were looking for an opportunity that was bigger than what we were able to offer. So, no, we weren't out soliciting, knocking on doors, making phone calls, but we were doing it through other mechanisms, through the, you know, the whole marketing effort.
Okay. Do you track property transaction prices and rental, rental rates within the corridor?
Do we have, he's like, his voice is very mobile.
I'm tracking rental rates, transactions, real estate transactions, that sort of thing.
Okay, so when we get the CO, a copy of what the planning department gets, there's, there is information about that and it's all over the map. It's $15 a square foot, $25 a square foot, $80 a square foot. It's all, it's, there's so many different kinds of property that it varies, so there's no real average. But we do see, and we keep track, it was one of the things that we changed a couple of years ago, where I now receive what like the fire department receives about every single property that changed hands. So we get a much better idea of who the property owners are out there. We know right away when things transferred ownership. So keeping track of it all is definitely a struggle, but we get a lot more information than we ever did before.
You, you, just to switch tracks a little bit, you said in the narrative that there are more people coming downtown. How are you tracking that? What's, what's the metric?
In part, it's in the, in the TAP article and I didn't want to, you know, go into every single detail that I did at the year end, but I think that when you look at how many people end up making our monthly meetings and the committee meetings, it's a lot more people than it was ever before. The second part that we looked at was really our contact database. We've had, we've struggled around 800 for two years and we're up over, oh, close to 1,300. I think it's 1302 today. So there are people that are joining our email list, we're broadening our ability. When I send a note out that says, we're doing this, more people are getting it and we see definitely that more people are coming in. I didn't mention in there that our Facebook has like 2,000 likes, which is, like, we've been around for a year, you know, working on our Facebook. So that, those are tangible things that I can see. I think that when you see the commitment of our board and how we were, you know, pretty easily able to replace people as they, you know, left and moved on from our organization, we are attractive. We, you know, bring folks in, we try to figure out a way that every single person can play a role within, you know, the Downtown Alliance. And that's important to me personally, that if anybody wants in, I'll put them to work.
Mr. Cruz.
Let me just add one thing if I could. What we don't have the capability of, Mr. President, is, you know, because I'm a metrics-driven guy too. And I want to know, you know, how many more people are walking up and down the street? How many more, or, you know, what is the, the increase or decrease in the, the level of rents and things like that? And that's a lot of data that you'll typically see in a big city chamber of commerce presentation and they'll have, you know, lots of economic information. We just don't, we don't have any means of tracking that, we don't have the people to do that. The flip side to it, and one of the reasons why we use the consultant that we did last year, was to bring in some, some demographic and some economic data that we could use as a marketing tool. Now, what are we lacking? We're not seeing, you know, coming back the other way. So it's a great point. We just don't have the mechanism for trying to track that. I wish we did, you know, because that would be, that would be, you know, great. Now, at, at some point, you know, could we set a baseline for what the rents are and see if they're going up over time? Yeah, that might be something that we could take a look at and try to fill in with, you know, with our database that we have now of the openings, the vacancies that are available. You know, what are they tracking in now on a, on a rental basis? And what do they actually rent for versus, you know, at some point in the future? One of the other, you know, frustration is that getting to some of these property owners is not the easiest thing to do. I mean, if you walk up and down the main street, you'll see that there's an empty storefront, there's not a sign in the window, there's not, you know, a for rent, you know, call a Realtor. I don't know what these guys are doing or what, you know, how they're renting their, their businesses. I really don't. And we found this out as we were reaching out to them, trying to get that property into the database, find out what the square footage is, you know, you're talking into a black hole sometimes. So, you know, it's, it's a little bit frustrating, you know, it takes some time, you know, we're trying to get there. But, you know, I think, you know, our, our mission this year was, was to identify where the, where the openings are, you know, what, what the businesses are that have a vacancy and then get it posted so, you know, somebody looking at our database can find, oh, hey, there's a thousand square feet perfect for what my client needs.
The, the other part that I think is really important about filling those storefronts and being a more attractive district to, you know, compete with South Orange and Montclair, the design element piece is really, really important. City Workshops is a fabulous store and right across the street is a really crappy-looking store. And we have to get to that business, that property owner and say, you can't have your store look like this. And we have a very strategic, thought-out plan to be able to do that. The last thing we want to be is the knocking on doors saying, you have to fix your storefront, Downtown Alliance, you know, thinks you look terrible. We don't want to do that. We want to help them, we want to be that partner in improving things. When we can make those 10 or 15 stores out of the 300 stores look a little bit better, we're going to get people filling those stores. I guarantee it, almost.
I've monopolized the time. Councilman, would you like to?
I do want to say something quick. The, the bulk of the budget that we're considering tonight is an assessment, a CID assessment, correct? So we have to look at after those business owners that are paying that assessment by trying to figure out ways to market, and I see marketing as a major percentage of, of your distribution, trying to find foot traffic and patrons to come in to the businesses. Now, my question is, in creating a point of destination, Mr. Cruz talked about how difficult it is to, to, to measure whether we're improving on the foot traffic, but I do want to ask, going forward, and I guess the administration, a question, it's a question for the administration as well, with the redevelopment plan moving forward, there needs, there needs to be synergy between the Downtown West Orange Alliance and the redevelopment area because you are going to get that foot traffic that we're looking for. You are going to, and that's, that's when we start, you know, measuring the, the amount of patrons that's coming in. What kind of plans do we have to connect? Because one of my personal major concerns about the redevelopment project is our ability to fill those units, those 300-plus units, to be able to find the, the demographic to move in there and to, to rent at those prices. They're going to go to your website, which is a beautiful website, by the way, I just saw it, and they're going to look for, you know, what's around this area. I need to see a map of all the businesses that we're talking about so that, you know, I can be, I, I can become more interested and I'm more willing to pay those rents. What, what kind of plans do we have to connect with this, with this vision, with this redevelopment project? And, you know, what do we want to do to draw in this, this new patronage?
Again, I think it's everything that we've just said, that we truly are feet on the street, that there's people that, when they try to call Gene Diaz and can't get an appointment with him, or they get an appointment and he, he doesn't pick them to be their store owner, they're going to, they come back to us. You know, they're still looking for, you know, specific kinds of support that our downtown is working on giving them. Parking support, definitely in the middle of town, those 100 parking spots that are going to be available to the retailers are also available to the poorhouse and the businesses that are on the other side of that, within that area. We need to identify and funnel in, make sure our website is very responsive, that when people reach out to us, that we get back to them, that they're not floundering out there. I definitely think that the, you know, the next six months, what we learned in the economic development plan was that businesses look, definitely the bigger corporations are looking two years out, the smaller businesses are looking a year out. So we definitely want to start attracting those types of businesses to take a look at us and then be responsive to whatever their needs are.
My point is that the new patrons, the new traffic, let's, my suggestion is to possibly, you know, use some of the funds to form a, and you may, you may have done this already, a subcommittee to try to develop synergy with the calendar as this project moves forward to connect with these clients, these new clientele that's coming in.
I'm going to be a lot less politically correct than Megan was in dealing with the relationships with PRISM. They have not exactly been a great partner with us.
I've called myself and I don't get called back, sir.
And I know that's a frustration that, that, you know, not just we share or I share. It's just the way they do business. And, you know, I guess we started out with a lot of high hopes that, you know, we could work with them and sort of feed off of that, you know, that, that buzz that they were creating. They seem to have taken the, and I don't even know this for sure because they've never told me for sure, but they seem to have taken the approach that they are going to be sort of a self-contained marketing and sales organization. They will find their own people and aren't really interested in, you know, interacting with us. We invited them to different events, they, they don't seem to be interested. So, as I say, we won't keep trying, but I think the other side to that though, Councilman, is that we have always said that the businesses outside of that footprint have to be successful in spite of what happens at the Edison Redevelopment site, okay? They need to be standalone businesses, if you will, okay? So, you know, having kind of kept that in mind, we're looking at businesses, trying to attract businesses, you know, incidental, what takes place at, at the redevelopment site, okay? Gene, Gene Diaz has my number, he knows where to get me, but, you know.
I'm just being selfish, Mr. Cruz, because we, we negotiated a pilot, so we have a responsibility to make sure that we do what we can to fill that building. If we don't fill that building, then we'll lose, okay? So I, I know you, you're looking after.
I'm going to take it back to your side.
Correct, correct. So that's why I asked that question because, you know, I'm a taxpayer, you know, and I'm invested in making sure that that development is successful.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm trying to see how we can develop synergy to make it successful so that when people look at that building, they say, hey, there's a wonderful West Orange Alliance with a beautiful website, you know? So I, I think there's a connection from my perspective.
Well, and, and let's be realistic, if, you know, you've got, you know, 300 units in there and those people are going to need places to go to shop for any number of items, the 15,000 square feet of retail isn't going to offer, you know, a whole lot. I mean, you know, what are you going to have? You know, a little sandwich shop, a, you know, a dry cleaners, a couple of other things. They need to be able to go other places. And if they don't go other places, then it's either going to fail or you're going to have what I said 10 years ago when I sat in the planning board, which I hope doesn't happen. And that is, the gates come rolling down at 10 o'clock and it becomes a self-contained enclave unto itself. And, you know, the community can't share, they're not sharing outside their own little community. That's not what we want to have happen. We want to have a thriving downtown. And, you know, Joe, you and I had this conversation about residents. I mean, the, the residents that are here now should also share in that. That's also important. You know, let's see their property values rise and let's see them, you know, be beneficiaries of this. So, you know, they can do a few more things. So it's not just, you know, redevelopment, it's not just, you know, the storefronts, it's the community as a whole. Everybody benefits. And then not just on the corridor, it's those neighborhoods behind it. That's also something that Michelle and I have had a lot of conversations about, how do you take that now and extend it into those neighborhood, neighborhoods behind it? And that's what redevelopment's all about.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Cruz, and thank you, Kevin, thank you, Megan, and all the others. But what's not been said here tonight and whether you, questions were asked, but the answers were not what I thought should have been the answers, okay? You're asking about what's making the property and everything and the additional people being interested in the downtown corridor. It is the Edison Loft Development. Merchants from around the area have seen that a developer is making the commitment of $140 million, they're making the commitment to build the project. So they're saying, okay, they have confidence. So if the township was able to move this project, if developers using their money to build this project, that's what's attracting and that's what's making it more, you know, attractive to merchants from other communities from around, it's worth the investment. If somebody's going to do that investment, they're going to make the investment. Second, the question was asked by Councilman, Council President, about additional people down on Main Street, okay? Your answer is right there, it's right for you. You have six new restaurants in the downtown corridor that were not there. You have six new restaurants in the downtown corridor that were not there a year ago, and their traffic, and they're being sustained by their patronage. That is another example of additional people coming down. I believe it was your question about, how do you know about additional people coming down? No, we don't have hard numbers, Council President, but I think that's something we need to look into. But, then again, the proof is there that you have six new restaurants in the corridor, and they're doing very, very well. So, that's another sign that people are coming down to Main Street. The other thing is, I don't accept the fact about when people say that Gene Diaz and Prism are not being good neighbors. Maybe they're not, but it's up to us as the downtown, the West Orange Downtown Alliance, as that West Orange Township Council and Administration, to make them a better partner, to make them, to enforce the issue that we've made a commitment to them, they need to make a commitment to us and to our residents, and by making them the perfect partner, it'll help us all in the end. It'll bring residents to live in the development, it'll nurture new businesses, it'll help with their, you know, filling up their retail, their retail space. So, all I'm saying is, I don't take, for example, that he's a bad, fine, if he wants, we can't let him be. Enough with just being accepted as a status quo, my colleagues and the downtown alliance is not to accept that. And that, the thing is, that's what we have to really make the challenge, is to make them understand that for them to be successful, they need to work with us, and for us to be successful, we need to work with them. It's a unique partnership, and it's there. It's been given to us, okay? The area, I don't care what people say about the streets behind it and everything else, neighborhoods worse than the areas down here have turned around in shorter periods of time. So, I'm not a defeatist, I don't believe in just saying, well, look what the area looks like. Well, you know what? The building wasn't there a year ago, now it's there. Let's see what happens now. Now, we have to work, we've been given something, let's make it work, and don't just say, if he wants to be that way, fine, we can't let him be that way, okay?
I think this is a good example of how our meetings last two and a half hours.
Councilwoman?
And thank you, everyone, for the time. I'm not looking to go two and a half hours on you, Meg, but I just want to make a, just a couple of quick statements, because I think, you know, we need to give some assistance to the downtown alliance as an administration and a council. You know, Kevin, you know, we've had that conversation, you know, Meg and I and Mike, we've been to the meetings on neighborhood revitalization, and it's not just the building, it's everything around it. And it's something that, you know, Victor and Isabella, you know, I've talked with Doffel before, getting your group more involved, and it's a lot of work, and what's great about it and optimistic is, you know, you have well over 100 volunteers, and it's a new year, everybody's re-energized, and yet you map out a plan, I think you're on the right path. But, as far as what we could do to help assist, I really strongly believe, you know, Mr. Serrison, this is where you need to come in, we need to get, and to Councilwoman McCartney's points, you know, we need to get the planner involved in meeting with the downtown alliance. We said, you know, budgetarily, the mayor committed that we could give the time, let's make the meetings happen so we could, you know, put that together and see what kind of assistance he could give the downtown alliance. I think that would be beneficial. Also, when, you know, one of your meetings, that you're meeting with the redeveloper, maybe you could have a conversation, you seem to have a good relationship with them now, that, you know, because I think I talked to them, and they were very friendly when we went to go tour the site, and, you know, I think they do have their own plan, and they are kind of in a, you know, little tunnel vision of where they want to go with their building, and I had a conversation with him about reaching out, and he seemed for it, you know, didn't make a move on it, but hopefully he didn't seem objective to it either. So, maybe those conversations from the administration could be a little bit helpful for the cause. So, I'm just going to leave it at that, but looking forward to a very good, productive year with the administration.
I think that what you said, Michelle, is true. Whenever we've needed, you know, parking assistance and help with the lots to support the street fair, Gene and his crew have been really great to deal with. They've been very accommodating. I think that the plan for the stores and what that project is going to look like is their own deal. And that's how they, you know, it's not been warm and welcoming here in West Orange for them in a lot of ways. So, I, you know, we keep reaching out, he opens my constant contact email every time I send it, and I'm not sure what he does with it, but he does open it. So, you know, we're going to continue to plug away and do what we do.
Councilwoman?
So, Meg, I think you just said it, because, you know, we have spoken to Gene numerous times, we have sent him invitations, and to Ed Cohen as well, and they come back, you know, not as one, they don't answer as one, they answer individually, and there's either a conflict or something. So, I know that the lines of communication can and will be opened, I think we're just not there yet. You know, the facade is there, they're just putting the foundation out. I tend to agree with what Jerry's saying. I don't, I won't give up hope on that. Even during the planning stage, Kevin knows, we asked a lot about the marketing tools, you know, he knows we needed, we wanted a food grocery store type of service there. A lot of it will be self-sustained for the residents that are there, but we also did not want to create a funnel. We want redevelopment to be what it's supposed to be, that it was going to expand down the corridor, not windows closed and everything stays self-contained. So, he knows that, you know, and I think we're just not there yet, and that, Michelle, just like we said, we've been, we've been on tours, we've spoken to them, we'll just continue to plug away. And that, even plug away, that I've sat in numerous of your meetings too, where you're drafting those readable, user-friendly brochures, and if it's helped the business owners understand our sign ordinance, you know, things like that, those things have to happen. Or, once they understand, Isabella even mentioned that, you know, once they understand the sign ordinances and how to comply with the sign ordinance, then the crap that's on the window could come on, sorry. But, you know, it's not just the sign ordinance, it's the, and the parking, you know, doing the maps, when I mentioned the community asset maps, also maps about parking and letting people know where to park and better signage, you know? Those are things I know that you're working on, and I know that all of your committee members that are here are working on. So, you just have to keep plugging along and use that social media to let people know that that's what's going on. But I think the user-friendly, readable ordinance idea, you know, not just a sign ordinance, but, well, I'm looking forward to that.
I have two ideas and one more question. The two ideas, first of all, the Christmas holiday program that you guys did, and that's the council people talk on the trolleys that go around and do the historical tour, I was absolutely amazed at how many people were there who couldn't get on.
Right, that's true. I had that in my report about the holiday open house, but yeah, that, we're going to have to add a trolley, you know, another hour, for sure. That's the kind of stuff we see, you know, we really do see that people are out and about, they like free stuff, we need them spending money downtown.
But we also don't want to turn people away, either.
But yeah, if we could dovetail free stuff with spending money downtown, you know, that's-
And that was by far the most people I've seen in the six years that I've been doing that. So, my suggestion is that maybe we get one of the town trolleys and run them, you know, as many times every, on the half-hour.
The jitney?
Yeah, the jitneys.
Yeah.
To make sure that the people get the-
The jitneys are not as, are just as big as the trolley, we'd have to go to that, a big yellow bus or a blue bus from the county. It's on our list of things to look at for next year.
Yeah, I think, give it some consideration to the jitneys.
You know, we always say that we want to do the history piece in, like, at another time throughout the year because it is such a big part of what we do, and Joe Fagan attracts people when he's-
He's a magnet, magnetic personality.
It's hard in looking at the schedule, you know, we start, we're going to start planning the street fair, you know, now, so it's cyclical, and, but we hear you, absolutely.
The second, oh, go ahead.
Just to that, and I have to thank Joe, because when we had those lines and people were waiting, Joe was a really good sport, we had to come outside to the crowd and tell his historical stories, and it kept them, it kept the time passing while they waited for the trolley ride, so thanks, Joe, that was great of you.
My second suggestion is, on the design program that you're doing, is to design a few metrics around that so that after it's finished, maybe you can take a look at it and see patterns that might give you some insight as to what's working, what's not working, that sort of thing.
Yeah, actually, I think that once, when the architects really got a hold of the sign ordinance, the first thing they said was, when can we change the sign ordinance? It's just, it's very specific, it's very not friendly, it's very difficult to maneuver. And this, that's what I think I'm most excited about in 2017, is the fact that there's these 10 brand-new people that, you know, actually care about design and are willing to work on making things better. That's really the last piece to, you know, what we tried to accomplish three years ago when we first started. It's all about design, John Groh said that to me when I first got here.
It's all about design.
It's all about design.
There's a tsunami coming. You were already talking about, you're going from 42 to 22, and you've got 333, you know, 600 people moving in, there's a tsunami coming, you have to be ready to ride.
Yeah, take a vote.
And my last question just has to do, you and Mr. Cruz, I think we're talking about the organization and the people and the trustees, and as you know, because you were here at the last council meeting, Mr. Jerry Eben came up and spoke at public comment and said that he had been given notice that he was going to be kicked off the board as a trustee there. And that was very disturbing to me, I mean, he's like one of our leading citizens, he's been president of the state affiliate of the American Institute of Architects, he's the only, I think, the architect or planner that's on the board, he's also been a national director of the American Institute of Architects.
Well, I can say that it shouldn't have been a surprise to Jerry about any of that that happened, and that that doesn't play into our budget at all, so I wouldn't want to comment any further.
Okay, well, that's certainly, that's certainly your prerogative, but I did want to know, one of the things he said was that he wasn't told why he was, why he was being involved in the process. He eventually resigned at the meeting, and I attended a short amount of the meeting where there was some limited discussion about what exactly he was being kicked off for. And I agree with you, it doesn't seem to directly affect our budget. We, meaning the town, provide almost $70,000 to the budget, and it's about 70% of what the assessment is. So, I consider, you know, everything that you guys do to be involved with the budget if we're contributing to it. But I just, you know, there's a larger issue, the fairness to Mr. Eben, and then the larger issue of, if you want to attract people, and good people and better people than perhaps in the past, it's going to be hard to attract them if they see that one of the people was, you know, being kicked off the board. So, I was just hoping to get some closure. Mr. Eben didn't come tonight, so he didn't provide anything, but I was hoping to get a little bit more information from you folks about what actually happened.
I could say that, you know, Jerry's welcome on the design committee, he just can't be a trustee.
But you won't tell us why?
That's between the board and Jerry.
This is a personnel matter, this isn't to be discussed publicly.
It's a budget hearing.
Well, it's not a personnel matter, he's not, he's not an employee, he was a volunteer, he's been volunteering in the town for 40 years. And I'm not going to beat a dead horse, I just was hoping to get more information about that.
I think it's also fair to say, with 100 volunteers, and this is the first situation that you had a conflicting situation such as this? I said you've had over 100 volunteers between your committees and your trustees, and this was the first time you had a situation such as this?
Yeah, the structure of the alliance is, I work for those 11 trustees, so it's really not fair to ask questions and to discuss it. I could tell you that Jerry's well aware of why he was discussed at that meeting, and I think we just have to leave it there.
Here.
Mr.?
Could I say something? It's not a personal matter.
No, no, this is not appropriate, Mr. Brick. I appreciate your enthusiasm and your willingness, but I think we should maybe cut it off, unless Mr. McElroy has anything else to add?
Do not wish to comment.
Okay, all righty. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Then, under, on our agenda, we now have public comment on the budget. If anyone is interested, we have to follow a very strict script. Are we ready? Great. The meeting will now come to order, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Krokoviac?
Present.
This is the time for the public hearing on the downtown West Orange Alliance budget for 2017. The budget was approved by the governing body on November 22, 2016, and advertised in full as required by law on December 15, 2016, in the West Orange Chronicle.
Before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. Each person desiring to be heard will rise and give his or her name and address before speaking. I will recognize one speaker at a time in order of rising as nearly as I can determine. Please address all questions to the chair, where necessary they will be referred to individual members of the governing body. Questions must be confined solely to the downtown West Orange Alliance budget for 2017 before us. School or county matters or any other municipal matters are not proper subjects of this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered here tonight. I now declare opening the public meeting on the downtown West Orange Alliance budget for 2017. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Please raise your hand. Seeing no member of the public who wishes to be heard, I will entertain a motion to close this hearing.
Motion?
Second.
Sorry. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokoviac?
Yes.
I will now entertain a motion to adopt the downtown West Orange Alliance budget for 2017.
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokoviac?
No.
Okay, the motion is carried.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate everybody's patience.
Nice. Okay, so that takes care of the resolutions. We have ordinances on second and final reading. Ordinance 2499-16, and ordinance adopting a redevelopment plan for an area in need of redevelopment consisting of Block 9, Lots 11, 1, 2, 3, 32, 36, and Block 7, Lot 22, in accordance with NJSA 40A:12A-1. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokoviac?
Yes.
Public hearing.
Yes. Again, I just want to ask a question, is it more useful to have discussion among the council people, or should we follow, have the public hearing now and then have discussion afterwards?
Have the public hearing now, I would say, just so that we can encumber whatever remarks are extended during our brief.
Okay. A public hearing is required for all ordinances on second reading. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? If so, please raise your hand, I'll call on you, in order, to come to the podium where you can speak. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, I close public comment. Is there any discussion among?
Let me just point out, Council President, that Sean Moransky, professional planner from Matrix New World is here to answer any technical questions, so.
Wonderful, thank you, welcome. Now would be an appropriate time to discuss, I know we've discussed this before, is there anything else anyone would like to talk about? Just so you know, this is the redevelopment area that's bounded by Central and Mitchell Avenues, that involves some environmentally contaminated areas. The township is moving to create this redevelopment area to qualify for some funds to help with the cleanup and also to spur commercial activity down there. Did I?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Cirillo, you had your hand up?
Yes.
Please.
Yeah, I would like to come in. And I would like to start by saying that Councilwoman McCartney is the expert in this, because she's part of the planning board, so, but I just need to become a little bit more educated on this process. My- I just need to become a little bit more educated on this, on this process. My question is, can you just give us a little background on the history of the proposal? It's my understanding that originally it came before the town council, then it went to the planning board, and now it's coming back to the town council? And then what's the next step?
Right. Generally speaking, that is the procedure. The, the municipal, the township council authorized our firm through the planning board to conduct an initial investigation of the lots in the area, this what is called a study area. Another lot on Mitchell was eventually added as well. There was a study to determine whether or not the, these lots met the redevelopment criteria, and there are several criteria having to do with the condition of the lot, ranging from the nature of vacancy to environmental concerns, and generally the, the condition of, of the area. And our study found that the lots did meet the criteria, and that study was adopted by this council. And then the planning board was authorized, as our firm was, to develop the plan. The plan was developed. We, Matrix, presented the plan at Planning Board hearing on December 7. The planning board gave us a lot of constructive comments. There were some amendments made to strengthen aspects of the plan, one aspect having to do with incorporating further design features into future development. Also, to ensure that any development on Mitchell, on Mitchell Avenue or any other streets other than Central Avenue were at a scale that were appropriate for those neighborhoods of a lesser scale. The idea being is that we wanted to make sure that any development would, on Mitchell, would be consistent with the scale of development on that street. More the commercial, the more intense commercial, higher building heights focused on Central Avenue. The planning board recommended adoption with the recommended changes. The plan was updated, forwarded, forwarded to the township, was reviewed, and now here we are in that plan, the amended plan based on the planning board comments is what's being considered for the.
Terrific. So are there two different redevelopment zones, or is just, is, because this, this is six lots? And you also have the Harvard Press development that's going on with the 100 units on the West Orange side?
Yes.
Is that two different?
It's not part of this plan.
Yes.
That's already, that's an approved plan.
That's, we already approved that back then.
Yes.
Okay. So, so the, one of the recommendations, or actually, one of the arguments when it was heard before the planning board was warehouses and public self-storage facilities. Was, was that eventually kept in the plan as a, as a, as a, not, I guess, preferred use?
No, it was kept in the plan. One was for, and focused on Central Avenue, one with consideration of existing uses on Central. Also, too, the public self-storage was, was an item that was incorporated for consideration prior to the planning board meeting. There are some specific requirements associated with that, and it's very specific to, very specific to a particular lot in that, in that zone. Yes.
Okay. All right. That, that, I see where we're going. One of the recommended uses was structured parking, which wasn't in there. So based on the remarks that you just extended, did, did we amend it? Did we amend it? Did you amend the proposed plan to include structured parking?
Yes. And when I recall the conversation, there was a concern by a couple of board members that the parking requirement, because we were having for permitted use, public parking for the township, and in addition to accommodate parking concerns of any future development, and that we wanted to provide more flexibility if a development wanted to provide parking above grade.
Sure.
And to be able to develop it in the context of any new structure as opposed to having to rely strictly on surface parking. There, it, it provided more development flexibility in that regard.
Is there any particular lot that is looking to encumber structured parking as a, as use, as a use?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's just, it just wanted to leave the, or we want to leave the flexibility there?
Well, based, based on the conversations with the planning board, wanted to leave it as an option as part of any future development.
Okay. And the, in terms of bulk requirements?
Mm-hmm.
Did, does the, the five-floor provision also apply to the structured parking, meaning it goes a parking, no?
No. Two-level maximum.
That's for residential?
It's for, yes. It's a, it's a two-level, two-level maximum for structured parking.
Okay, two-level. Okay, good. Good. Yeah, you know.
Two levels above grade.
Right, exactly. Thank you. And then lastly, the, the issue with the superseding zoning in the area?
Yes.
Was that, is that being presented to us, or was it not, was it not adopted as, as a?
It is, it is superseding the zoning.
It is superseding zoning.
In that particular area, yes.
Okay. Okay. That's the extent of my questions for now, Council President.
Great. Anyone else? Councilwoman?
Well, so the zones are industrial district and residential, mixed multifamily residences. Guess when I start, when we started talking about the resolution and the conditions in that resolution, Sean, we talked about the update parking to permit the parking garages as well as surface parking. These were things that were added to the, to the resolution. Limit neighborhood commercial uses to fronting on Central Avenue, that, because that is the zone for commercial properties. Limit the height of the proposed self-storage facility to maximum permitted depending on the street frontage. Place the word minimum before front, side, rear yard setback. I think if you recall our last meeting, I talked about how they were going to maintain that it really is residential zone. They were going to maintain that.
Yes.
Part of the plan. That they note that with the maximum height level, limit of 55 feet, that there were other height regulations within the plan. And increase front yard setback for properties with frontage on any street other than seven, Central Avenue from 7 to 12 feet. So want the businesses on, fronting Central Avenue. Maximum, well, this is what you just said, the maximum height of the parking garage is two levels above grade. Maximum height of the principal buildings have frontage on streets other than Central Avenue are limited to 35 feet, which is what our zone is. Within 100 feet of those street frontages, floors above the first floor shall be set back an additional five feet from the top of front facade of the first floor. Another section, delete, this was like wordsmithing. There was a, a words approved in there. We took words out there.
Yes, to, to just clarify, make sure the language was consistent throughout the plan.
And you just mentioned about superseding. There are no applications pending, but because this is a, an area in redevelopment, there are permitted uses in the plan of what we expect to be there.
So, as a follow-up, Council President, may I?
Please.
So, so the next step is the development of a site plan, correct? Are you developing this? Okay, so we're declaring the area as an area in need of redevelopment?
Well, that's already been declared.
Okay.
For your council action. This would be the adoption of the ordinance that would be applicable to the redevelopment area. With regards to a site plan, that's up to an individual developer applicant to come in and submit a plan, and there is procedure in the plan, how in consultation with the township professionals, and ultimately planning board review, to discuss the details of any site plan review. So this just sets the ordinance, the guidelines for any future applications in this redevelopment area.
One more question, Council President.
Certainly.
So, 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 Mr. Gross, so we're setting the parameters right now, and then we're going to put it out, and then potential developers will come in and, and give us their proposal. So the more flexibility, which, which is going back to my question, the more flexibility we have, I guess, the, the, the better it is for us.
I don't think you want, I don't, I don't.
You don't want to be constrained.
You sure weren't in, in too tight, let's put it that way.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
So I can just tell you what the permitted uses are, right?
You want to get what you want.
Sure, sure.
But you don't want to make it so tight that, that you, you.
Yeah.
We're not prescribing what's going to be there. Right. It's still commercial property, so we're not prescribing what's going to be there. It's commercial property.
We can switch from commercial to residential, because you're leaving that flexibility over superseding the zoning.
We're also looking for open space. That's permitted use, multifamily residential uses, including affordable housing units, neighborhood commercial uses, pocket parks or other public amenities. And as you said, we left the warehouse in because it was already, it was an existing structure.
And just given the nature of a couple of the sites, as was earlier discussed, the initial impetus of this was to get funding for cleanup of potential sites. So to have a wider range of uses, because some might not necessarily be available in the short run, depending on the particular site being developed. So wider flexibility is helpful in this situation.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman?
I read all the conditions and permitted uses. It was a unanimous vote by the planning board to recommend this area. If I pull out all the other files that I have here, I think I also mentioned at the last council meeting that we have been discussing this site since 2005. So we did have a planner, Anthony Nielsen, that came before the planning board back in 2005, presenting similar plan. Really sorry that it has taken this long. We do know it's brownfields. We do know that there is cleanup involved. That's also going to be a time element that we'd have to consider, but.
Again, there.
Needs to happen. Right. Needs to happen.
I, I think it's a, it's a really good plan. As you may have seen before, I, I know of one of the property owners who recently purchased the property.
Yes.
Invested hundreds of thousands of dollars and wants to invest more, who does not want to be part of the plan. And I wrestle with trying to give, try to give way to what a property owner wants to do with their property. And, and as you know, once we accept this plan, and some of the, the destiny of the property owner may no longer be in their hands. So I'm just, I think it's a good plan. I think it's a great cause to try to fix that area. It's been, I've been living here 13, 14 years, and that has always been a real, a real blight. And I salute the town for, you know, and the planning board for moving this forward. It's just, I wrestle with that, with that issue. I'm glad the.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
I was just going to say, would you want to address that? Because that's why we left the warehouse in, because we knew that that's what the property owner.
Right, exactly. There were concerns about existing property owners, and obviously you don't want to take their rights away for what they have. So for, the concern was to give them rights to upgrade and improve their site to the use they want. Obviously, it would be subject to a site plan. Within the context of a redevelopment plan, that any development is going to have to take into account what's being envisioned over the long, over the long term for that location. I, I think it gives it a higher level of scrutiny than it would under the current zoning.
How many of these redevelopment plans have you been involved with?
Well, with the company, I've only been here seven months, but one. But over my career, I've been involved with at least a dozen.
Have you seen, have you ever seen a redevelopment area this small?
Yes. Yes, I have.
Frequently?
What's that?
Frequently?
Not frequently. But yes, I have seen. But generally speaking, they have been larger than this area. But again, you're dealing with, excuse me, the context of where we're located. And Ms. Councilman Cirillo, I believe, referenced the redevelopment area, the Harvard Press to the east. So this makes for a logical progression since they do abut each other. So you are starting to create something, it started with one, now you're another one. I'm not saying it's necessarily going to be the next one, but you've, you've established something here, a pattern for, for future development that wasn't there so long ago.
So Sean, and to that very point, that's what you're hoping redevelopment can do? Can you also mention about the Highland Avenue Station right there? And so in the other properties that you have looked at?
Right.
What does that mean, having a train station?
Well, the Highland Avenue Station being less than a half mile from this area, excuse me, you have the potential for the opportunity for transit village designation, that there's an encouragement of development within that half mile of the train station. The idea over the long term is to create walkable communities, that you have a neighborhood that is a potential asset. You have a midtown direct line. You can go to other cities in New Jersey. This area is, is really an underutilized resource for a variety of reasons, historical and otherwise. But now the township council obviously is taking the steps to move in the direction toward that goal of establishing, in the long run, a transit village or transit village type of neighborhood with the train station as part of the focus.
Anybody else?
No.
I read the whole ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As, as you may have just recalled me saying earlier, a public hearing is required for all ordinances on second reading. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this ordinance?
Here we go.
I'm not even going to read the footnote then. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2499?
Second. I'm too excited.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
No.
Next is ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
2500-16, and ordinance creating request of payment salary, scheduling certain county or west orange employees setting forth their title, press application, salary renews, and adopting salary guide and establishing employee status as a county employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of the Towne. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading? So moved. Second.
I'm not saying anything anymore.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia?
Yes.
Sorry, I was, I was waiting for when I was going to do my big screw-up tonight, and he was trying to have the second council, the second public hearing for the previous ordinance. And I want to thank everybody out in the office, audience who was laughing and snickering at me so that I actually realized what I was doing wrong. Thank you.
We haven't laughed at you.
No, no, you did. I said at the audience.
His wife.
And people I thought were my friends. A public hearing is required for all ordinances on second reading. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing no hands, I close the meeting. Close the public hearing. Now, anybody like to discuss this?
Nope.
Nope. I read this whole thing.
This is, this is just.
Housekeeping.
You did read this whole thing, I hope.
Oh, yeah, I did. Yes, I did.
Mr. Gross, would you like to describe this with a particular emphasis on the significance?
It's literally housekeeping. There is, you know, it was a, a promotion that the council approved during, during the budget process, and for no reason that I can even come up with, it just didn't get effectuated in the ordinance. And during this process of, with, doing the new pronos, you know, we were able to identify along the way some other things which we took out earlier than this one. This should be, this should be the last one. We've, we've uploaded this into our system.
That we just sealed this.
It fit perfectly, so we think it should probably be the last one for a while. At some point in time, I'm sure.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2500-16? So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on first reading, ordinance 2501-17, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 traffic subsection 7-29.1, speed limits in general of the revised ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading? So moved. Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia?
Yes. Just a quick question. I believe, Mr. Lepore, you have suggested a modification of the ordinance?
Yes, a small one.
Okay. I'd like some input or a ruling from Mr. Kizer about whether that's significant enough to have to. Right. Whether we have to redo, whether we have to make the change. Essentially, the change is a couple of words. This is, this is an order, Mr. Lepore, if you'd like to come up and save me, that would be fine. It's an ordinance reducing the speed limit on Lowell Avenue behind Gregory School. And I guess this is all my fault. Didn't I raise this issue? Anyway, please.
Well, you raised the issue, and then I did a little bit more research, and that presented the change. So this is an ordinance to create a school speed zone. Last year, you did, as part of some changes on Pleasant Valley Way, reconfirm a school speed limit on Pleasant Valley Way. Actually, we made it a little bit bigger. Here, we're adding one to Lowell Avenue with the use of Lowell Avenue now as an area for a drop-off of students and pickup of students. Lowell Avenue is a one-way street. It's not exclusively used for the school. So there are other residents who will come off of Walker Road and access to Gregory Neighborhood. So during certain times of the day, we want to make sure that they're doing less than the statutory speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour. So I'm asking you to consider a fifteen mile per hour speed limit. In essence, while children are present, and by statute, children are present means when they're being dropped off at the opening of school, being picked up at the close of school, and during recess.
Can I?
Mr. Kizer?
Council President, Lenny, I think I got an email from you sometime late this afternoon regarding this, and I couldn't find it on my cell phone just now. But if I remember correctly, there was just a change of time or something. It was like a.
Three words, "and during recess."
I mean, I don't, I really don't think that's significant enough, given the context of the ordinance, that it's material, you have to really worry about it.
And we're following the state statute language for school speeds.
Can I ask a question? So what about when you have, like, I don't know, the rec uses the field too. I mean, is that?
No.
It won't, it won't count then?
School in session.
Okay.
Schools in session.
You know.
Councilwoman, you good?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just one for, like, how are you going to enforce it, you know? You make changes. I just want to make sure we're out there enforcing what we change. That's all.
Again, it's on first reading, and we've got a ruling from Mr. Kizer that we don't need to change, change the wording to start the process of approval over again. So we'll have at the next council meeting.
Why wouldn't you change it?
We are changing, it's on here. It's been revised.
Put it in there for one, just as first reading.
Change it now.
I am.
Yes. Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
It's already been amended.
Okay.
Yes.
So we don't need a motion to change the wording?
No, it was made prior to introduction.
Because this was revised already, so now we're looking at what it is we wanted.
Right.
So that's number two. Great, should we now move on to? Twenty-five-oh-two?
Yes, twenty-five-oh-two. An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven Traffic subsection seven dash forty-six-point-two. Parking prohibited during certain hours of certain days on certain streets, servicing residential land uses except by permit of the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukovia?
Striking.
Yes.
You know, three on the match is dead luck, you know that.
Better hurry up and screw up again.
Public hearing, I mean, I'm sorry, is there any comments from the council?
Just, just Mr. Lepore, so if, how are we going to notify these residents? Like, how they know they're going to need a permit?
Well, they're going to be notified of the reading, a second reading. So they requested this, so I'm going to notify them if they want to attend next, the next meeting to attend, and then the process starts where if it gets adopted, we'll establish a procedure for them to get permits.
Okay.
Council President.
All right.
But Lenny, the residents within this radius have been notified already because of this?
They actually submitted a petition to have that.
Right. But so, but they, have they been notified, noticed that?
For first reading, no. For second reading, they will.
Right, so they get the opportunity to come out and speak on it.
It's on me.
Anything else? Madam Clerk?
Okay, ordinance twenty-five-oh-three dash seventeen, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven Traffic subsection seven dash thirty-seven-point-one B, municipal parking yards, metered parking, permit parking, time-limited parking, and subsection seven dash fifty-point-three-H parking meters and parking yards, prohibited parking of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukovia?
Yes.
Does anyone on the council have any comments?
Well, it's, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, perhaps a thirty-second synopsis, Mr. Lepore?
It was brought to our attention by staff at the Edison Central Six that there were some parking stalls that were being used in the lot on Seward Street by, by members of the neighborhood who weren't moving their car. And in particular, it wasn't necessarily a car, it was, it were some vans that were being used for commercial purposes. So what, the purpose of this ordinance will be to, one, identify it as a parking yard in our general ordinances, and then to prohibit the use of, or prohibit parking by commercial vehicles in that lot. And that would be at all hours.
So what, pay us a question yet?
Please.
Thanks.
Councilwoman?
So, so right now, this isn't school board property, this is our property.
That's, that's correct.
And, and the teachers, the school's been using it. So is this now going, do they need a permit to park there during the day? Or how are you going to?
Not trying to make it any more complicated than just to try to solve a problem of a few vehicles that are parking there that we don't want to park there.
Okay, but what hap, now, do any of the neighbors that aren't commercial vehicles parking overnight?
There, there may be. Bill Keigho thinks there are. We're not trying to chase them. They don't seem to be the problem. So what we're just trying to do is just address the, the commercial vehicles that are using that. And I'll notify that immediate neighborhood, and then if I see these vehicles, I'll put a flyer on there.
Okay, sounds good.
Very good.
I think we're good. We're down to pending matters?
Yes, pending matters, new matters, council discussion. Underneath that, we have the Human Relations Commission ordinance.
If I could, prerogative, I'm sure Mr. Lepore would like to go home. I don't know that you need to be here for this, except for a discussion, or just a brief explanation of, on the artificial turf fields at the high school. And then we could let you go home, if you'd like to come up and just briefly discuss that. It was something I've been asking about for a couple of, a couple of council meetings, and never remember to bring up that matters pending.
Oh, can we answer that on the email?
And we did.
Right, but I'm, I'm betting that there are people in the audience who would be interested in this. So.
I mean, I have an answer for you, so.
Our fields were not included in that.
Right.
The, some of the publicity, although negative, towards the Field Turf Company, has revolved around a product, I think they called DuraSpine.
DuraSpine.
And Prestige XM, I believe. And they were using that product during a period of 2005 through 2012. We initially got involved with Field Turf at the Lincoln Field in 2001. So the initial Lincoln Field, which was replaced in 2013, was not that product. And when it was replaced in 2013, wasn't the product either. The stadium field at the, at the high school was installed in 2004, before that DuraSpine product. It's now twelve years. It's, certainly it's wearing, but it's not showing any signs of premature wear, any of the problems that were described at other fields where Field Turf had installed the DuraSpine. The baseball field does fall within that window in 2006, but that's a completely different product, being a baseball field and not a football field. It's not just meant, it's not meant to stand up to the impact of a contact sport like football. So, plus, not showing any, any signs of problems, even though that's been there ten years. So we haven't had any problems, and the fields aren't, aren't part of the problem turf field. Thank you.
Any questions? Comments?
I just want to make a statement, just the use of the fields. I mean, they really stood the test of time. I mean, those fields are used literally almost twenty-four-seven.
Twenty-four-seven.
Almost, yeah, they're used almost twenty-four-seven, not only just the high school programs, but all the recreation programs. So they really, they really don't owe us. They were very good investments made. You'll see wear on the high school football field, because that is scheduled to, you know, be, be done, you know, sooner than we would probably like to do. But again, the, the use, that goes on those fields is tremendous, and it does save a lot of costs with the field prep, if we would have to prepare the fields and whatnot. So, and we're saving in the township, because we don't prepare the town fields anymore. We've been using the, the complex, so. Thank you, Mr. Lepore.
Use these fields, except when they're snow-covered, they're in use.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment, that during that exchange, we also expressed that we want to make sure that those warranties are available, in case something happens with those fields. You know, there's a long-term warranty with those fields, so, you know, whether it be that, that product, or any, any other, any other issue, we have to make sure that, you know, that warranty certificate is handy. So we made a recommendation to the Board of Ed about that.
Yeah, they, they have, Mr. Seagie does a very good job with the, with the buildings and grounds, so he's very meticulous. I'm sure he has those warranties.
Got some agreement?
No.
We're beyond the warranties now, though.
Thank you, Council President. The fact of the matter is, when Lincoln Field went in, I mean, at that time, it was the only turf field in town. So it was used by Mountain Top, the high school, Powell, was used for lacrosse, was used for football, was used for soccer, girls' softball. So we got a lot of years out of that product. And thank you. So basically, it, the product held up better than, than the warranty said. Now, the product would have lasted longer if it wasn't overly used. I mean, you know, these fields are only made for one or two sports. This field at Lincoln was being used for six, you know, and it was constant, twenty-four-seven, you know, training at night, you know, the boys' soccer team, you know, everything else. Basically, we got our money's worth out of, out of Lincoln Field, and hopefully, we'll get money out of, you know, the second Lincoln Field, so. And it's DuraTurf, it's not DuraSpine. The product now they're using is DuraTurf. It's a whole different product. Thank you, Council President.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Lepore. Actually, on the agenda is a discussion prompted by Councilwoman McCartney about a proposed, but not yet on the agenda, ordinance that will be modifying the West Orange Human Relations Commission's makeup, their actual membership. And Councilwoman just suggested that perhaps we discuss it a little bit tonight, so if.
Thank you, okay. So when, when Chairperson Tammy Williams came to our meeting to, to invite us to the, well, to introduce herself, but also to invite us to the Martin Luther King event, part of, there was an email attached about her proposed ordinance for, it's already, we do have an ordinance, but there were changes. So I really expected it to be on our agenda when I didn't see it. That's why I thought we should discuss it, or just wait till January twentieth, our next meeting. The proposal makes so much sense, because right now, the ordinance reads that there are twenty-three commissioners. I think that's an unruly number. I think it's wonderful, if there are twenty-three people that do attend monthly meetings, that would be great input. She wants it, she's proposing it to thirteen, makes it much more manageable. And that was really the only change, and to be discussed. There were a couple of wordsmithing edits that I pointed out, but other than that.
Makes sense.
I think we should propose a new ordinance.
Council President, if I may.
I said the twenty, sorry.
I, I had a conversation with our business administrator. It's our understanding that it's in legal's hands right now, to make sure that, that it's being reviewed. In addition to the changes in, in the makeup of the organization, there's other changes with respect to raising, being able to raise funds, submitting a semi-annual report, et cetera. So there's a little bit more substance in there that needs to be looked at from a legal perspective. There's some language in here that I'm looking at that states, and I don't know if it changes the mission of the organization, which is, is saying that it's, that it would, it would place special emphasis in under-deserve for.
Underprivileged.
Underprivileged and under-deserved. I don't know if that's the mission of the HRC. I thought it was to bring people together for more walks of life, not only those that are underserved. So I have a lot of questions about this. Thank you, Council President.
Okay.
I'm sure that, I think that it is an all-encompassing, I think those were portions of, I'll read it again, but I didn't, I didn't read it to be exclusively that, and I don't think that, that's certainly not the mission statement of the Human Relations Commission that I know of.
Right.
Yeah, I was just pleased to see it, because I know they have a lot of, a lot of challenges keeping three, we have challenges here on the council, because we have three appointees, and it's sometimes tough to juggle all of them. So I think, I think you can go from three appointees to two, and I think you can still maintain the high quality of the folks and what they produce over there.
I guess even as a commission, they could still create a five-oh-one-C-three to, to help with fundraising efforts, just like the Arts Council, or?
Actually, just to clarify, the individuals who happen to be on the commission can create their five-oh-one-C, the commission itself can.
Right. Right there.
You really have to keep separation.
That's not a.
And even that DCA is responsible for that.
It's something, it's something, as you know, we're trying to do with the open space.
All right.
Some people, some people on the open space can.
A committee, yeah, right.
Yes, yes. Anything else?
For matters pending?
Yes, for matters pending.
Yes, just a quick question. When will we start the budget process? And if we have questions in advance, let me pose it this way. So last year was my first year with the budget process, and I, I thought it was a very thorough, very, very long day, however.
Thoroughly long day?
But it's after the budget's crafted. Do we have any pre-budget conversation in regards of some issues, some items that we may think, we may have questions in advance that may or may not go?
In this form of government.
Yeah, I know. I'm used to that, that school board.
In this form of government, the mayor has the responsibility to present a budget to you this year by middle of February.
Okay.
You then have until the end of, of March to introduce a budget. That's your responsibility. So in between there, there, you, from the time it's presented to you until you introduce it, it is one hundred percent under your purview. But until that, it's one hundred percent under the mayor.
Okay. So if any individual questions we may have, like, for example, the, the facilities at the firehouses, you know, would that, you know, be included in this coming year's budget and, and a thorough plan?
The, the council has the ability to make any changes that it wants, up or down. There's, there's voting requirements to go up over the mayor's, mayor's budget. I think it takes four votes, four, four votes to go, to raise the budget, and normal three votes to lower the budget. So that's, that's the statutory process, the constraints with which we work. I mean, you can do what you want, but it's, mayor, mayor has the responsibility to present the mayor's budget.
No, absolutely, absolutely. I just wondered if there was any input we could give beforehand, you know, before the budget is crafted, that's all. I guess the answer is no.
There's nothing, there's nothing statutory about that. I mean, obviously, you can have conversations with the mayor.
Yeah, which I could have with him, okay.
Anything else? I have one more. I have one more item on matters pending, which is, we discussed it a, a meeting or two ago about the status of the, the auction, the potential auction of the Ridgeway Properties. Is there any new news out of that?
Yes, what we have done was extended the deadline to award bids to the end of February. There were some, there's three bidders, and there was some issues, so people wanted to reduce some of those issues. And so we extended the deadline to the end of February.
So when you say extended the end of the deadline, do you mean...
To make the award.
To make the award, not to have a new...
No, no.
Okay.
Just to make the award.
Okay.
Can I, just to follow up? Did you guys schedule the, the neighborhood meeting yet?
No, we're going to do that in between.
Okay, let me know.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Happens to be your neighborhood.
So the neighborhood meeting would be similar to the ones we had a few years ago?
We're going to try and get a meeting at the church.
So, of course, you live there.
Have a great event, play what's going on, and then we'll take it to February.
Okay.
That's probably going to be your first or second meeting.
Yeah, will you let us know?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other matters pending?
No.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Some of...
I want to alert everybody that I'm anticipating that some ABC charges are going to be brought up soon against the number one, probably two licensees. And we're going to have a hearing on those charges. I'm not going to be here the first meeting in February, it has to be away that week. So I'm probably, I'm going to ask to schedule that hearing or those hearings for the second meeting in February. I'm not sure what the date is. And depending on how many witnesses there are and how long it might take, I'm going to also suggest that perhaps you might want to have a special meeting to handle those. It's always been a tough fight to get anybody to do that, and scheduling is difficult, but I'm going to throw it out there probably when the time comes.
Do you just need three of us?
So, yeah.
Okay.
Basically.
Okay. More than a four. Was there a second to adjourn?
No, can interrupt it, but now I have a question.